The council as a whole, committee to order Thursday, May 28th, 2015, budget hearing. First on the agenda tonight will be the Board of Health, page 106. Good evening, Mr. Curry.
Good evening, Councilor.
Board of Health Personal Services, 469,744. Board of Health expenses, 53,748, total of 523,492. Mr. Curry, any comments before you start asking questions?
I do have some goals that I would like to share, if that's acceptable, or, excuse me, some accomplishments that are, if it is acceptable. If I run on too long, just send me the signal, and I'll try not to spend...
You don't need to give a real back.
Yeah. So, anyway, thank you for listening. I'll try to be brief. I just want to start off with saying that the Health Department in the City of Pittsburgh was one of the top 25 finalists in Denver last year, in 2014, of July, at the All-America City Event. Twenty people presented. We did not finish in the top 10, but still, I think it's a great accomplishment. Recently, we've held Ward Four, Ward Cleanups in the city, and the reason why I bring that up is because Saturday is our final cleanup. It is being held in Ward Four, and Ward Five is in collaboration with several agencies. I will shorten it up by stating one particular interest that is new of the whole issue, is that we are partnering with Unitil. Unitil will be taking used dehumidifiers back on Main Street, 412 Main Street, at the parking garage, and residents are able to get a $30 rebate with their used dehumidifier. So, that's kind of an exciting new thing with the cleanup, and hopefully, I don't know of any way to dispose of a dehumidifier, so this is a free chance to dispose it, as well as make some money. I'd like to talk very briefly about some accomplishments with our grants. We have our opioid grant. We've held over 200 Narcan trainings in the city. That includes residents, public officials, safety officials. We also continue to have a goal in to reduce opioid overdoses, misuse, and abuse within the city and across the Montechusa Public Health Network, which consists of 11 towns. As a reminder, Pittsburgh Board of Health is a lead agency of that network. We would like to continue on our Mass in Motion grant, on our efforts to reduce obesity and increase physical activity in the city. That is a renewed grant for three more years. We recently received a mini-grant this week for the purposes of continuing with our efforts to have residents have options for free disposal at three different kiosks in the city for shops, also one at the police station, in addition to a shops at that location, too, for one more year of disposal. Those kiosks are in 11 towns in the Montechusa Public Health Network, so central mass residents have a free option to dispose of those meds that are in medicine cabinets, as well as shops. They cannot be disposed of in household trash, sort of an unfunded mandate that was sent down in 2012 by DBH. Very quickly, very shortly, the council will be seeing we received a new grant this week. It is a substance abuse prevention collaborative, kind of goes hand-in-hand with the opioid grant. It has the potential for $700,000 over seven years, two years renewable. That is to implement policy system and environmental changes in regards to underage drinking and also other drug use. So, as I stated, it goes hand-in-hand with the opioid grant. We will continue with the DIG grant, which involves the Montechusa Public Health Network. That's, again, 11 towns. We have one more year of that grant. Towns are now paying the city for the employees that are employed by that grant. We hope that will be 100% sustainable within the next year. As far as other accomplishments, I'd like to point out that the department has worked very hard with technology. We've come a long way in the last year. I would say, in the 22 years I've been with the department, we've come from the '50s to the '90s in one year. We've installed View Permit. We've issued 300 food permits just this spring. We've also installed See Click Fix. Residents are able to report certain problems. Mostly, it's potholes, but there are health issues, such as graffiti, other complaints, missed trash. Residents are beginning to use that. I hope that some point in the next several months, we would like to implement that as our complaint system within the department. It helps us with tracking to make sure that every complaint is addressed and repaired, if that's the case. We've also installed DocuWare. As you know, three years ago, we moved from City Hall. I moved to over 40 filing cabinets with the assistance of the staff. I don't intend to do that again. We would like to be nearly 100% electronically filing. We've got a ways to go. It's a lot of work, but we're going to try to condense from 40 filing cabinets down to zero, if we can do it. We have continued with Maven. Maven is a communicable disease tracking device through the state, and we've also implemented a new VIP system, which is a burial permit and death certificate reporting that is implemented by the state. And these two computer programs have made quite a difference in staffing time and reporting, so it frees up clerks for other activities. Some goals. I'd like to increase code enforcement on vacant buildings. It is an overwhelming task. We do have over 300 registered vacant buildings in the city. There's new programs within the Housing Court to appoint receivers. I will use Shawna Street as one example. Councilor Hay is familiar with it. It was a vacant building. It had a pool, which had putrid water in the back, attracted mosquitoes and such. We were able to appoint a receiver for that property. The receiver actually performed activities to remove the nuisance, got the house in saleable shape, which wasn't a huge task, but did cost about $30,000 to $40,000, and put the property back into the market. The previous owner had passed away. There was no owner of record. Mortgage company wasn't responding, so that's just a prime example. If this is something we can... We have done this about 10 or 12 times in the past couple of years, but we'd like to be a little stronger on that, as I feel vacant buildings are really what is bringing the city down, as far as blight in many of our neighborhoods. Obviously, I'd like to continue to implement and improve technology. I will need much assistance from the staff, as well as IT. And I believe I will stop there, because I think I've gone on long enough.
Good. I'll start by first saying, I think addressing the vacant...
May I interrupt you?
Absolutely, sir.
Sir, I forgot to point out, we do have one board member present, Sandy Neip, who is a nurse and member of the Board of Health.
Good evening and welcome. I'll start by saying, I'm glad to hear you say that the vacant buildings are something that you're looking to address. I agree with you wholeheartedly. They are an issue that the city needs to address in terms of quality of life and quality of neighborhoods. One or two buildings can really detract and take down the quality in that neighborhood. So, if you hit them, I certainly would be appreciative. But going back to a couple of things you said, Steve, I just want to follow up. Your first statement was that, technology-wise, in the 22 years you've been here, we've gone from the '50s to the '90s. Well, that would mean that when you started in the early '90s, we were 40 years behind, and that would mean that, by today's standard, we've gone from 40 to 25 years still behind. I would hope that we're looking to move that forward from the '90s to 2015.
Absolutely. If I may comment, the department did not have computers until 1999, so...
And my second question is, this body recently approved money to get a new website. Will that website assist you guys in putting out programs for residents to contact you and talk about potholes or issues and things that are there, or is that something that's already existing?
Well, I understand that if the new website is put into place, that See Click Fix will phase out. That is my understanding of it, but I believe there is something built into that new website that replaces See Click Fix.
Okay, thank you.
And I welcome the new website, by the way, because the present one is very difficult to work with.
Thank you. Councilor Green?
Yes. Just going over the numbers. Can you explain the overtime at the tune of $37,000?
I'm sorry, overtime, Councilor?
Overtime.
Sure. Overtime is, I would say, upwards of 95% of the landfill employee. The landfill is open, much more hours than the city is open. That employee has overtime every day, because the landfill is open more than the city is contracted out. That employee is in the inspectors' union and works more than seven, one and one-half hours per day. And, might I add, that that is 100% paid for by waste management. So, employees at the landfill are 100... The city is 100% reimbursed for this overtime. Now, I will say, within the 5% to 10% range, depends on the year and how many... At times, we do have to respond to fires and such at restaurants, housing issues in the middle of fires, in the middle of the evening, as well as cleanups. That might be ranging in the $5,000 to $10,000, but most of it, 90% of it, I would say, is waste management and landfill associated.
All right. And the $10,000 for sick time buyback?
The $10,000 is a stipend an employee receives upon retirement. I believe we have one employee retiring in this budget season.
Okay. And my last comment would be, again, I've certainly enjoyed sitting with you and the members of the Board of Health for our NICE subcommittee. I do think that in that, our little subcommittee, we do end up getting some stuff done. Of course, I always think that we should have more money set aside to get rid of blighted properties, abandoned buildings, buildings that aren't able to be rehabbed, and I think that this past year alone, your, the recycling inspector, kudos, because every time I see tickets on trash barrels or tickets being issued, I think that we're doing a good job for our community, so thank you.
You're welcome, Councilor. Unfortunately, that program does end in December. I mean, I could continue it on, but obviously, I'm going to prioritize that individual's job duties.
Of course, yes, I understand that. Thank you.
Councilor Bean?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Curry, getting back to the housing issues and the vacant housing and the neighborhoods and that. I noticed in your report here, you mentioned for dwelling inspections, you had 2,800 inspections. Is that 28 different dwellings, or 2,800 times you've went to? I mean, are there multiple businesses to dwellings, or is this a one-time?
That is, I would say, near 100% responding to an exterior complaint of some sort, whether it be a curbside trash violation or a complaint on a dwelling that has some sort of a defect, porch is falling off, or...
So, that's a dwelling inspection. Now, the violations, then, so you've got 5,300 there. Would you say those are... I mean, is there anybody kind of, do you use a GIS system, you have to kind of target those, and, you know, is it 10 per house, or is it just one? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out, is there a better way to target? Because I think we talked about it last night. Councilor Chris Merrick talked about, to the Building Department, the College Neighborhood Area, and some other areas in the city, where we don't seem to be able to get ahead of it, because some of these landlords are smarter than we are, or have better lawyers, or are able to work the system better. But I just think there's got to be a better way to be able to crack down on these landlords or these homeowners that just aren't keeping their properties up, because, you're right, it's like a cancer. And, you know, without naming neighborhoods, I don't want to paint... But, you know, we have four or five neighborhoods now, they're kind of, it's creeping, and if we don't get a handle of it... And I understand the NICE committee is working, but, you know, until we stop having some serious money for demolition, or some real teeth into these violations, we're not getting anywhere. I don't know what your thoughts on it, if you could kind of maybe tell me. I mean, these numbers look okay, but it's not... You go out in the neighborhood, and you don't see it.
Proactivity is a huge step. We have the ability to knock on doors. We have the ability to place pressure on tenants and owners to get in the property and see what's going on in there. It's dedicating to the staff and the time to do that, and especially to concentrate on those properties that are within a neighborhood that is still... I hate to say we're not neglecting the ones that are in the difficult neighborhoods, but maybe we can catch that one or two properties before the whole street becomes an issue. And that is kind of my strategy on the vacant building receivership. The receivership is going to be much more difficult on those properties that are underwater. But if, in the better neighborhoods, if we can get banks that are out of state, that don't respond for months, or turn the property over, to respond a little quicker and be proactive about it, that's really the only way we're going to stop it.
Okay. I mean, if there are tools that you know of, or any ordinance that we should... I know they're working on a nuisance ordinance, but anything that we can do as a council, you know, feel free to let us know, because, you know, I just see these neighborhoods, and I just don't see improvements, and it's disheartening. You know, Councilor Boachman and I did a tour one day...
I think it all starts with trying to keep the neighborhoods clean, first of all.
Yeah.
And a great amount of time needs to be spent on that, and then, you know, and that includes abandoned vehicles, things like that. Any condition of blight, proactivity, we need to be proactive as possible. Police these neighborhoods on a regular basis.
Right. And I guess that's your department, that's your role, and hopefully...
We try to do that. I can't say that I can commit to that on a daily basis, but we try to... Especially through NICE, that's been very effective in getting a team together, because it really needs to be a team approach.
Yeah.
In fact, we did some proactive code enforcement with several departments just today on a particular property, and it was very effective in removing some undesirables and getting into some units that needed to be inspected.
My message is be as aggressive as possible, use the court system, use the lawyers, use the bully pulpit to embarrass people, but if we allow these to happen, it's just going to...
For many years, Councilor, receivership is a great program, but there was nobody willing to be the sucker to be a receiver. It's not always a profitable job, but the program has really improved in the last two years, and the court is really less apt to... They actually have a role of interested folks that they appoint as receivers, so we've been utilizing that the best as we can. I believe we have about six receiverships going as we speak.
Okay. Just change the subject a little bit to landfill.
Yeah.
Next two or three?
We'll do that at a separate time, Councilor.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Councilor Joseph?
I just want to say, with all of the things that you're dealing with today, I know when Jeff or you would come in here, we would talk about trash, and we would talk about certain issues, but now, we're talking about opiates, we're talking about obesity, we're talking about code enforcement. I mean, that job has expanded so much. The Ebola, you know, there's so many things that you and your department are dealing with on a daily basis, and I just want to say that I think that you're doing a fantastic job. I think that Pittsburgh is being looked at as the leader, because a lot of the grants that you're getting are being funded through you for the entire area, and I just think that that leadership is a great reflection on you and what you're doing for the staff, and what your staff is doing for the public health of the City of Pittsburgh and the Montechusa area. So, I guess it's just, I look at the amount of grants that you're getting and the staffing that you have, and it's just like, I don't know, again, we never know how you do it with the people that you have, and setting priorities is one of them, but I just think with all the things happening in this world, you guys are staying on top of it, and you're doing a great job of it.
Thanks, Councilor. We found it's easier to address things across communities. We're all suffering in this area from very similar problems. It only makes sense to work together, and it's really been a lot easier to get things done when we're all in the same room, working together.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's good that you're helping coordinate it.
And it doesn't, it helps tremendously when there's some money involved, too.
Thank you.
Seth?
Yeah.
Councilor Chris Merrick?
Mr. Curry, I'd like to kind of piggyback on the comments by Councilor Bean with regard to code enforcement, particularly in certain neighborhoods, be it, you know, the University Overlay District or the Elm Street Neighborhood. I asked the Building Department a little bit yesterday, and I know you kind of answered with regards to receivership and what more we can do, but I guess I'm curious where we can form collaborations and be a little bit innovative in terms of code enforcement, so that we're engaging in education for the residents who live in either tenement houses or just apartments with negligent property owners and landlords. It just seems like, you know, whenever I've sent a property to NICE, it's been extremely responsive and reactive in all the perfect ways, but when you have an entire neighborhood or an entire city block, it's tough to be able to pinpoint and say, well, it's that one property, and in fact, it is an entire problem area. So, if you could speak a little bit about where you see where we have room to grow and where you think we can make some progress in the next three or five years?
Well, I think through NICE, we obviously have to start utilizing the ordinance that was adopted a couple of years ago. We need to start identifying problem properties, and the ordinance, it comes about from four really quickly. It comes about, problem properties identified as receiving four complaints can be from any department. I think we really need to utilize that. If it comes down to putting a sticker that the property is a problem property, making it public, if that's what it takes, to address all these issues. I think I lost some, I had some of your question in there, but I've lost it.
If you could speak a little bit more about the educational aspect of where we can work with tenants and then collaborations.
Yeah, I'm actually working with an intern presently. He is, the school escapes me, but it's not Pittsburgh State, but he is actually putting a presentation together on what responsibilities of tenancy is and what owner's responsibility is, and he has kind of a draft that he's approached the Landlord Association with, and we've been working very close with him. We'd like to hold these, as part of his internship, to hold these meetings, whether it be at the Landlord Association or at City Hall, to invite tenants to publicly visit and get some information, and if we can get some brochures out of it, that would be helpful, too.
Steve, if I could just interrupt for one minute, I want everybody to realize, it's a little warm in here, we're going to turn on the AC, so if everybody wants to talk, you can talk a little bit louder, so that the microphones pick it up and the people in the audience can hear us. Thank you.
So, I appreciate that, and, you know, I look across this city and see, you know, we have tremendous support from the various nonprofit organizations that operate in the city, whether it be the university itself, Claymore Neighborhood Association, Elm Street Neighborhood, CDC. I just feel like, you know, wherever we can form closer partnership and ties to them, because they operate often with the groups that are living in these areas that might be affected the most with negligent, you know, property owners. So, I'd love to see more of that. A question about waste management, is that the appropriate time to...
No, we'll get to that page.
All right. So, that said, Mr. Curry, you know, every time I've emailed you, every time I've brought a concern before you, you've addressed, you know, immediately, whether it's my emails at 11:00 or 2:00 in the morning, you're responsive within, you know, hours, and, you know, miss trash pickups, I, you know, I'll see someone there, you know, within hours. So, I certainly appreciate all the work that you do on a daily basis, and I know the challenges are, may seem overwhelming at times, but you certainly pull it off well. Thank you.
It's good to know.
Councilor Beazall?
Yeah, I'd like to echo what Councilor Chris Merrick said, and very responsive. I know I've called you a lot, and you're very responsive with your help. The question I have is, so if I'm looking at Personal Services and 407,000, and I'm looking at all the grants, so basically, a third of your funding for the associates in your department and their clothing and everything is coming from grants, is that correct?
I gotta do some quick math in my head, a third?
It's actually, it's 600,000 if you add everything up, then you take out the 200,000 for the grant. So, it's like a third of your budget in this area is coming from CDBG and grants. So, my concern is, what happens the day, if it ever comes, when we lose a third of our department, because...
The only one that really, or two, I should say, that actually employs folks are CDBG and the SMRP, which is Sustainable Materials Recovery Project. Those are the only two that actually employ people. The other ones are more or less time spent. For example, if I spend two hours a week on the opioid grant, I would charge that grant.
Okay.
So, if these grants were to go away, it wouldn't affect staffing so much. CDBG would be a big hit, if that did go away. I didn't mean to lead you in the wrong direction.
Nope, that's fine. Yep. The other question I have is, I know that a lot of the councils talks about inspections and code enforcement, and there's always a concern about overcrowding, especially, it seems like in the college area. Boston adopted a policy where they actually have partnered with the college. The college is giving them the information on where the students live, and then they're having the Board of Health and Building Departments go in and inspect these before the students move into them, and I think this is great, because, you know, not, you know, I love kids, but sometimes, they don't make the best decisions, and the last thing we'd ever want is a tragedy to happen within our city. Has anyone ever thought of using the same policy some of the other cities have adopted, to actually have these pre-inspections before the kids were to go in, so at least to make sure that everything was up to code and it was ready for these students to move into?
Yes, we have given that thought. We actually have a program already in place that's very similar to that. Anybody that rents, third-party, that rent is paid by a third-party, requires an inspection and a permit from us. So, on the basis of that, obviously, that program could be expanded into something very similar of what you're referring to.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the Board of Health on Personal Services or expenses? Seeing then, we'll move forward to Public Health Nurse, page 109. Public Health Nurse Personal Services, 129,288. Public Health Nurse Expenses, $1,000, total of 130,288. Any questions or comments for Mr. Curry? Seeing then, we'll move forward to Rubbish Collection, page 172. Rubbish Collection and Disposal. Contract fees, $1,500,000. Contract services, $460,000, total of $1,960,000. Councilor Bean?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Curry?
Talking about the landfill, what is our contract right now? Is it, we're in a second year, third year, first year? How does that work?
The landfill is on an extended contract. It was previously a 25-year contract, adopted in 1992. We basically extended it for the remainder of the life, so basically, I think the exact language reads that it's extended till 2023 or until capacity, which at this time is right around 2026.
Okay, so 2026, okay. And then for the pickup, let's say, so that's the landfill, and then for the pickup, the waste management, what's your contract?
That is a contract that was established in 2012. It runs for six years, so it expires June 30th, 2018.
Okay. Is there anything at the landfill or in the rubbish contract that we should be working be worried about the next couple of years? Any kind of clause or anything, a kind of threshold or anything that we should be nervous about?
Well, we should obviously always think about solid waste and what we're going to do beyond 2026.
And you've got, you're working on that, though, I'm sure.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of dead ends at the moment, but we do have a couple of irons in the fire legislatively. But I can't think of anything off the top of my head otherwise that
Okay.
Just, I would state, maybe it's not the appropriate time, but the previous contract is, was written in 1992. There is some language that is a bit outdated. So, I may, in the next year or so, look for the, some of that language to be cleaned up into an amendment.
Thank you.
Not a pressing issue.
Okay, I didn't, I just wanted to know anything that, you know, bubble up or something like that. So, thanks.
Steve, you said 2023, but then you said 2026. Is the life expectancy gone, those three additional years because of the change in how people are dealing with recycling in the city? And we're getting some extended time out of that?
That's helped, but it's usually, it's overall. This economy has a big play in it, too. People are just not purchasing like they were
Yep.
Several years ago. So, the amount of trash produced in the area or Massachusetts has been reduced due to the economy. But there are strong efforts.
I hope the economy comes back, even if it shouldn't.
I'd like to take credit for reducing that. I mean, we, there's a, there's a piece in it, but...
Okay, that is part of it.
It is part of it, yes.
Counselor Kuchmerich.
Mr. Curry, this, this past year, I'll preface this by saying, I understand this past winter was, is taxing and is challenging for every department across the board. And it pushed everyone to the max with their ability to operate. And my concerns aren't with you or the Board of Health, in that I think you responded appropriately whenever you were called upon. But there were times where I saw, you know, pickups and delays in pickups who are just unacceptable. A week, two weeks, missed pickups altogether. Couple of streets in my neighborhood, and I realize there are some tenant code issues as well going on there with the properties, but it looks like entire streets were missed for two to three weeks at a time. I know we got some publicity about that, some rather negative publicity about it. And that was in Ward Four. And disappointed to see such long delays. And I know Waste Management at times would blame the DPW, but I'd see a DPW sander go through a street four or five times, and it didn't seem to impact Waste Management's pickup. So, I guess all of this said, where can we improve on that? Because we don't get to control the weather. And when instances like that happen, is there some kind of reimbursement? Are we issuing a fine to Waste Management? Where, is there room for repercussion on their end and for us to try to make good on, on, you know, some of these?
To answer part of your question, that is one of the reasons why I installed See Click Fix, because I didn't know about a lot of the delays. And people, I'm not sure people are out there that are aware that, who to call because of that. I mean, we send a calendar to every health hold every year, but I'm not sure it's getting read. But I don't think people knew how to, knew who to call. And the ones that, that I did know about, yes, there is ability to fine Waste Management for a missed pickup, $25 per pickup. But I actually went a little step further with that and threatened to hire another company. And if, if they didn't tackle the list that we had for them, and then that list contained residents' complaints, that I was going to get another company to do it and send, take that off of their bill. That's when extra trucks showed up immediately. So, we did have a shouting match on a few occasions during that period. I understand services were not adequate at times. So, it was, it was tough to mediate, whether it's a, a weather problem or if it's actually, they're not, their lack of doing good business. But in the interest of getting things done, they, they finally responded with a little pressure. I, I agree, it shouldn't have gotten to that point.
Well, yeah, I mean, I appreciate, you know, when we look at, you know, the size of this contract, you know, essentially $1.5 million. You know, that's, that's no small chunk of change for a city like ours. So, I think it's important that these contractors understand that there are repercussions for, you know, failure to deliver what they've promised to deliver. So, I appreciate that you're holding them accountable and, you know, threatening and shouting accordingly, because, you know, what I saw in some areas just wasn't acceptable. And again, I, I, I hope we can expect an improvement from them.
I did meet some very high-up people when, when, when I was stamping my feet during that period, the people I had never met before. So...
I appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Counselor Joseph.
I don't know if I missed a bit of your presentation. I apologize. But did you say what percentage for recycling we're doing now as a city or how that's grown?
City is around 31% recycling.
And where were we before we started the initiative?
Nine, 9%.
And what was, what was the goal that we were, what was, I know we talked with the state, and what were they expecting us to be at by now?
Well, my goal was 25%. I didn't really see us going 30. That is the state goal, is to be a 30% rate. So, we have won awards for the last, since 2012 from the state. Basically, a certificate stating the city of Pittsburgh has met the state's goals for reducing the amount of solid waste and increasing recycling.
Are you still doing any educational programs in the schools to get that going further?
The grant didn't support the schools with our current grant, but I was actually talking to DEP today, as a matter of fact, and they had mentioned to me that the few, I think councils may recall, last year I got a dividends, recycling dividends grant because of all the programs and the amount of $6,600. I believe that program is going to grow, and in part of that grant money will be used for that purpose. So, I, I was told that we may receive upwards of $25,000 this time. So, we're able to do a little bit more programming, especially with schools, if, if that is the case.
You probably bring Mr. Recycling Man, Mr. Counselor Polvay, back into duty. The recycling center at Devon's with the fire there. I mean, I'm sure that was a big part of our recycling. Has, has that already been backed up? And what was the plans for that?
We're seeing it at the landfill, and the two transfer stations are seeing an increase. In fact, one of the transfer stations just yesterday asked me to increase their acceptance of the amount of tonnage they can receive. So, I have to work with DEP on that. But the Board of Health would have to allow that along with DEP. And I think that, business-wise, I think it would be a good thing to encourage, provided they follow applicable regulations.
Now, so are we not allowed to, are we not allowed to send things? What are we doing with our recycling now? Was, was that a major part of?
The city's recycling goes to a facility in Billerica.
Okay. So, we're not involved in the Devon's?
No.
Facility, okay.
Okay. I follow your question now.
Sorry. I thought, I thought that, I thought that was mentioned that we were one of the communities that was using that recycling center.
Oh, no. I, I thought you were asking me, is our, our, our material increasing? And yes, it is as a result of that.
Okay. And, and Waste Management, they, do they take, it's an educational thing, do they take trash from other cities and dump it in our landfill?
Yes.
And how, is that, I know that we're making money off of that, but is that still a good plan with the landfill having such a short?
At some point, we're going to have to say no. But at this point, we're still producing $1.5 to $2 million annually. So, that's a big chunk of budget to, to cut down presently. But at some point, we do need to take a hard look at that and reduce that.
Is there some way we can get a, maybe a presentation on that or get a better idea, maybe through the Finance Committee?
The contract does have some language in it. Once we are, I believe, within, I mean, obviously, I think we should respond before than this.
Right.
But once we are within, I want to say it's a year of closure, it automatically ramps down to, right now, we can accept 700, 1,750 tons a day at the landfill. It would automatically get down to 300. But that's something we could look at long before.
I mean, if we're, if you say we run into a lot of dead ends, I think we should be looking at that sooner than later.
I agree.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Boshin.
Steve Hoy, you and I talk a lot. Hey, Rick, let's go back to what Mike Kuchmerich said. A couple of times I called back in the winter for Rockland Street, Federal Street, Dumas Street, Martell Street. And then the lady at the desk told me they were going to come Saturday. So, I go back to the people up there and they say, Saturday...
Keep in mind, Counselor, those are all hills.
Yeah?
Keep in mind, those are all hills.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that. And I go back and tell them all Saturday, and they never show up Saturday. So, I look like the fool. So, I said, I don't know. They told me Saturday, and I'm telling you what they told me. But they have, they never went up there for three to four weeks at a time. So, I just wanted you to know that. And some of them did call your office directly.
Yep. I've actually asked them when they're in a delay or in any sort of excessive areas missed that they, kind of should be doing it anyway, but they actually supply me a list. And when they do give me that list, I can, I can send it to you folks. I'm actually looking at a couple of programs where, to use that dividends money that DEP granted us last year for an app or something for a smartphone where folks can get reminders when their trash day is, when they got to remove their barrels, if there's a delay. Try to get some information out there, because that's the biggest, biggest problem is, I struggle with trying to get people to pay attention and, to my information that I'm sending out. The website is effective, but...
Now, let me ask you a question since we're on that discussion. I drive around the city quite a bit. And I, look, I'm very observant. And I see trash barrels, trash barrels full days before the rubbish is coming. Do we fine people for doing that? A prime example, let's use Kimball Street. They're out there on a Sunday night, and they're not picking their barrels up to, say, Tuesday. I forget Wednesday, what day they are. But they're out there quite a bit earlier, chock full. Is there any kind of fines on that to stop them? Because I was told it's only a day, nine and a day before you can put your rubbish out, like eight, 10 hours before?
It's 12.
12.
Chapter 112 of the city ordinance is, does define that and does have a fine structure. And yes, we do do that. And that, that is a, an issue that needs constant attention, especially on those days that our trash collection is on Monday and Tuesday. It's tough to see that they're out there Saturday and Sunday. But we do work at that. Have we made great strides? I think we could do a little better.
Okay. Now, is it fair to say, is it safe to say, we got, what, 3,000 apartment houses?
I believe that's approximate, yes.
And is it safe to say that every apartment generates waste? Is it fair to say that?
Yes, it is.
So, I'm going to use me, because I own a, I won't pick on anybody, Paul Volshman. I have a four-family, and I'm only paying for one, and I got three floors that are generating waste, and they're not paying anything. And I believe you and I talked, we can cut this budget down in half if we charge the multifamilies?
Well, we wouldn't be able to cut the budget down, but we would increase revenue.
We can increase revenue, yes. And how much do you think approximately, you said to me, I think it was over half a million, approximately half?
Well, give me some numbers to work with. What are you charging?
You said $100 a barrel per floor.
Okay. Well, you can only charge what it costs the city to do service. Otherwise, it's a tax. We could, this was a presentation back in 2010, which went over like a lead balloon. But I believe it was in the council, this was before the barrel system. I believe we left it as the council agreed that we would be able to charge a fee, five family and up. We actually chose to not give the five family and five to, I shouldn't say five and up, I should say five to eight units. We decided, rather than charging them a fee, which was kind of overwhelming administratively for the office, that we would just not give them barrels. We would only give them four barrels and make them buy additional barrels if they needed them. There was all kinds of variations, and most of the councils are still present through, that went through that period in 2000, between 2010 and 2012. It was, it was tough to get everybody to agree on what program was best for the city. But I'm, I'm all ears when you want to talk about it and move it forward.
So...
It wasn't very popular to charge a resident a fee.
I think we're all upset with the barrels.
But many communities do do it.
I think we're all upset with the barrels at the time, but they're looking pretty good, because, you know, if the people don't overfill them...
Counselor, I'd speak for yourself, not for all of us being upset with the barrels.
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
It's okay.
I think it's working pretty good, in some cases. If they don't overfill their barrels and the trash is going on the ground, then I...
That does defeat the purpose.
All right. So, you think we should go, look at that again, that program that you've suggested?
Absolutely not.
Well, you can decree, I'm thinking about the guy...
I like to sleep at night, you know.
I'm thinking about the old lady next door to my house that's on a fixed income. And you know, and I'm coming to retirement age here, and I'm going to be on that same fixed income. And I don't want to end up on Wallace Plaza or the Sun Dial, no offense, Steve, and anyplace like that, because I want to reminisce about my kids running in the hallway. And, you know, and I believe...
Paul, Paul, I have a say-so of who gets in the Sun Dial, and you're not on the list.
Counselor, trash can be treated very much like a utility. You pay for what you use. You just have to get a whole lot of people to go along with it.
It's like, if you want to fill up my gas tank, I let you fill it up every time I need it. So, you're saying the same thing there, huh? Yeah?
Yeah.
All right. That's it. That's all I have to ask.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Didn't go over well last time, because we're already hosing the people enough. But, you know, the city's never shy of trying to hose the people even more. With that said, when I hear about the landfill filling up in 13 years, 10 years, and everybody, you know, people I've talked to are like, oh, my God, what are we going to do? Let it, let it close. We spend, what's our, our contract with them is $1.5 million, and we lose $1.5 million?
The landfill is disposal cost, which is a smaller number.
Okay.
Which is five.
And how many employees do we, 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 we have over there?
Just one.
Do they pick up the healthcare and pension benefits on that employee, or they just pick up the salary?
I believe they do pick up all the costs associated with the, I'd have to double-check that, but I believe they do pick up all the costs of that.
They, they pick up 30 years' worth of expenses once that person retires?
I, I don't know how that works, but I would be glad to look into it.
I'd be curious to know a cost analysis of what would happen if it closed, because to me, there's a lot of headaches associated with it. All these other cities and towns are dumping their trash and waste into our landfill. That's why it's closing, that's why it's going to close. And Waste Management's making out like crazy. Waste Management doesn't want the place to close, because then they're going to have to move their business elsewhere, but they'll find another place. But my concern is, it's inevitable. It's going to close.
Yep.
So, we should just plan now for what the cost impact is going to be, positive or negative. And so, we're not all, you know, hit in the face with some kind of a surprise. But at the same time, there's a lot of headaches that we then forego by having it be someone else's problem.
I will comment on that, Counselor. To, to, the expectation there is, because we have a landfill, we pay less than $40 a ton. I can tell you that the city of Gardner and other communities pay upwards from $80 to $100 a ton. So, that's what we would be looking at. So, costs would double disposal.
Okay, but the contract we have with Waste Management, have we ever had that go out to bid? Or have we always just given it to them?
I believe it went out to bid, yes.
How long ago?
Which, the '92 contract went out to bid, I'm pretty sure. I wasn't around there.
So, have we not bid this contract since '92?
I will say, Counselor, in 2000, '92, yes.
Since '92?
Yes. But it was a 25-year contract.
I understand, but I mean...
It was bid on.
So, by that math, that would be 2017? Or you said 2018?
2017, yeah.
2017. Are we going to have that go out to bid in 2017?
No, we've already amended the contract to keep it till capacity.
And why, why did we do that? Why didn't we see if we could get a cheaper price from someone else? What was, what was the methodology behind that? Why didn't we have it go out to bid?
I don't think we had a whole... I don't think we had a whole lot of problems going on. I don't think there was a lot of competition out there. There may be now, but I don't, at the time, I don't, there wasn't a lot of competition for curbside trash collection either, and now there is. I will point out to you, Counselor, and trash collection disposal is exempt from purchasing laws, 30B.
Well, that's comforting.
In 2007, the curbside, and you can look, I don't have the reports with me, but in 2007, the contract went out to bid, and it doubled from 2006 to 2007.
Okay, I-
It went from roughly $450,000, $450,000 for trash collection to nearly a million when it went out to bid. So that was the thought process of why we didn't let it go out to bid last time. Now, 2018, I, I agree with you, Counselor, I would look tired at changing that.
Okay, well, that's my, that's my point. I really wish we didn't extend it. You know, because there are other cities and towns don't have Waste Management. I mean, it's competitive now, so I know our experience way in the past was negative, but I guess, it's a risk, I'm not denying that, but I just, you know, if we just leave it on the table like that and let the company just continue to go on, you know, they're making out like abandonants, and we don't know if we were, we could've got a better deal. I'm not necessarily saying that was your call or your, your decision. It was whoever the mayor was at that time, in my opinion, all, all roads lead to the top. But it's a little disconcerting that we just extended it till the landfill is full. But I've always wondered about that, why, why it didn't go back out to bid. That's, that's all.
I only know of really one other company that runs a landfill. And I do know the, the problems they've experienced are a little frightening.
Would it be less expensive, once the landfill is gone, for it to go out to bid? Would it be less expensive, since we're not, would it be more expensive? For, if we went to another contract, if we went out to bid, would, would the bids collectively be lower, now that we don't have the landfill? Or would they be higher?
Would the bids for disposal cost be higher?
Exactly.
If we don't have a landfill?
Right, yes.
Absolutely.
Okay.
That is one of the benefits of the landfill, it's got reduced disposal costs.
Was there any-
If we were to go to another landfill, it, it would be near $100 a ton rather than 40.
Just out of curiosity, in the negotiations, if you can recall, or your predecessor or whoever, is this in the clause of the contract allowing Waste Management to throw trash from other communities into that landfill?
Yes, it is.
Could we have said, "You can't do that"?
I didn't negotiate that contract. I suppose you could, but where, why, why would you, what, what would be interest of running a business there if you couldn't do that? I mean, they're not gonna survive on our trash alone.
I just, for some reason, Mr. Curry, I just, and it's not a criticism, I just feel like Waste Management's making out like abandoned on this. And even though we get some money for it, I mean, I feel like they're getting a hell of a lot more.
Why don't, why don't I send you a cost analysis? I have one from several years back, I'll see if I can get an updated one that shows.
I'd love to see what it is now versus what it will be, once that landfill's gone. And if it's more expensive, it's more expensive, it is what it is.
Oh, it's gonna be more expensive.
We can't, we can't control the inevitable, so we might as well prepare ourselves now for it. So that'd be interesting to see.
If I may comment on that, I, the city ran the, the landfill from 1972 to 1980-something, and it was due to close at that time.
Yep. Okay, I, that, that information would be interesting and insightful, in my opinion.
So if you wouldn't mind, let's discuss exactly what you're looking for.
Oh, yes, I don't, yeah, I don't wanna waste your time guessing what it is.
I'm a little unclear exactly what you're looking for.
No, I, well, we'll, I'm sure we'll bring it up at a future time, this isn't like a, an action item.
I'd gladly provide you a cost analysis, I have. I, I know it's been several years, I wanna say it's four or five years old, it could be more, but I'd be glad to produce that and get an updated one, if that helps. Why don't I produce that document and see if an updated one would help with your-
Sure, thank you. Um, I, I just would, not getting off that easy, I'd like to make a recommendation that 40,000 be cut from rubbish collection.
May I comment on that?
Certainly.
Counselor, I know you've, I've sent you a copy of the contract, you know that it's, the number, 1.5 million, is already less than what the contract states. I've already been forced to cut some weeks of yard waste. Don't forget, that number also includes a fuel charge. If the price of gas goes over $3.80, we are charged extra. And that number also includes bulk item collections at $10 per bulk item. That's kinda been tough to, the program is picking up now, people are utilizing it, but that cost is there, I just-
I, I understand, I, I, just so I can explain. Since 2009, the average balance in these two accounts is $170,000, average. In 14, it was $108,000, 13, it was $109,000, 12, it was only $10,000, 11, it was $214,000, 10, it was $200,000, and '09, it was $250,000. What I basically did is I said, "What's the average over those seven years of balances?" And it's 170K, 25% of that is 40,000. 25% is a plugged number for me. Basically, what I'm saying, like I've said all along, is the average balance of 170, even with the cut, there's still 130K of there, of wiggle room, that we on average have at the end of the year. So I'm just saying, why don't we take off a little of it? So 170K average balance, I'm asking that we consider cutting 40 of that. Thank you.
I'd like to respond to that and say two things. First is, we have a contract, and I believe this body is obligated to budget the amount of that contract on an annual basis. That Mr. Curry's department is able, through their management techniques and the hard work that they do, bring that number in lower each year, so that we, they do have that money at, at the end of the year, that goes back into the, the general fund, is a good thing. But I think we have an obligation to, to fund what the contract is for, because if they don't do their good work, and they're not able to get that savings, we should have the, the money in the budget to, to pay for that on, on the top. And my second comment, Mr. Curry, as you said, I see you, Counselor. My second comment is that you said there is a gas component, that if it goes above 382, we get charged the, the gas thing. Was there a component in the opposite direction, when you signed the contract, and gas was $300, $3.19, and it went down to 199 or 201? Did we get any money back from Waste Management because of that?
So it's evaluated every six months, so it will be evaluated again in July. I, I believe that's when the gas prices plummeted, as long as diesel was less than 380, yes, we will receive a credit for that.
Thank you. Counselor Dean Natale.
Like every other year, I, I think Counselor Joseph had a sound first.
I know who had the-
Okay, I'm sorry.
This was on the same subject, I was allowing you to respond.
Just, not to sound like a broken record, a few weeks ago, I brought up the fact that health insurance was gonna underrun by almost a half a mil. And the people at the time said, "Oh, don't say that, we need that money." And now look what's happening, we're issuing it to here, here, and everywhere. I am so frustrated, every single year, been here eight years, and I hear everybody say, "Don't do this, don't do that," and the next year, it happens. And then the next year, it happens. To insinuate that if we cut $40,000 out of $2 million is going to put us in jeopardy, then I will personally take responsibility for that, I guess, because I am basing these on averages over a seven-year period, seven years. There is a lot of fluff at the end of the year, and I am not criticizing the fact that there are cost savings. My point in these cuts has always been, if you look at the statistics, why do you continue to overfund accounts that continuously underrun? Other areas do not get that money.
Counselor, my response would be that when you talk about health, those are speculations, that they're saying this, this is what we anticipate the cost will be. In this instance, we have a signed contract for a specific amount of money, and I believe we should put that into the budget each year, and if we have savings, that's a good thing. And if we had a bad year, we should have that money available, because if we have a bad year, and we cut it, they're gonna be coming back to us on the other end, and we're gonna have to fund it, because we have a contract that says we owe that amount. It's just a disagreement that you and I have on how to fund this.
I wasn't really addressing what you, I'm just saying in general, 'cause this is, this is what I get all the time.
But this is, this is different, because this, for me, is a contract.
Did we have a signed contract last year?
Yeah, we have it out here.
1450? Hundred, 1.45 million?
Yes, but I didn't know the gas prices were gonna plummet. There's a lot of variables there, I don't know how many bulk items we're going to pick up each year. We do, we do have a barrel system to maintain, there's just a lot of variables there. I agree with you, I'm not-
I get it, I get how the budgeting works.
I mean-
That's why I use this long period of time. I'm not looking at one year or two and going, "Well, it didn't happen those two years, so let's forget it." I'm saying, seven years, the trajectory is the same, so that's why I'm saying it. I know one year could happen, and that may happen, but after seven years of it not happening, I think the odds are okay, so-
I will say, in either one or two of those years, Counselor, I came back for more money because of the, of that cut.
Contracted services, not the contract fees? You wanna forget about the contract fees? Contract services, the average balance in that account's been over $100,000. Forget the contract fees. So you can get the 40K from there. I've, I've made my point, I don't know what else to say.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Steve, the hours of operation?
At the landfill?
Yep.
It is 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM daily.
When did we go back to daily?
It's always been daily. It's, for residents, it's only Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday. That was established before my, my reign. And the idea behind that was to reduce the amount of injuries that were occurring at the landfill with residents, and to try to control the amount of trash that was going in there. I mean, I, I can't obviously speak for my predecessor, but I suspect that those were the issues at the time.
Do you think that there's a need to have it open for residents during the rest of the week?
I don't see, we've changed our permitting, who's eligible. We have loosened the regulations as such, as far as who can obtain a permit. I think we're addressing the need. If I'm wrong, I need to know about it, because I'm, I'm not hearing it.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Joseph.
Okay, just to go back to Counselor Dean Natale's question on the, what, what they're making on our trash. Can't we find out from some of the cities that Waste Management is servicing and using our landfill, to find out what they're charging per ton for those different communities?
I believe Gardner pays around $85 a ton.
Okay, so assuming, assuming that our $40 per ton is what, is what their operating cost in order to run the trucks and all of that other, all that other stuff, and then you subtract the amount of money that we're charging per ton to dump it, then that's pretty much what they're making off of those other communities?
We, we benefit from, it's in increments. The greater amount of trash collected daily-
Yeah, I, I understand.
So that's a hard ratio to-
But it's just if you figure out how much they're paying, figuring us as being the base, because we, we have the landfill, we're paying $40 a ton, so that's like the base. And then whatever we charge them to take in per ton, that would be what their other expenses are off of that 80,000, $80, $80 or whatever a ton, then that would be their profit on top of that. So we could figure out how much Waste Management is making on every other community's trash that we're losing out on when they bring it to our landfill.
Right, but that does vary-
Right.
Because of the amount that is collected by, I, I understand what you're saying.
And then the other thing is, the, if, if, if taking this, I do not wanna see that our residents lose any more than what they're getting. It's already hard enough to do the yard waste in four weeks or three weeks, because that's really not a very big window, when you're cleaning up a yard, and you have storms, and you have wet leaves, and you have snow late in the year.
There hasn't been very cooperative in-
Right.
We've had snow in October and November in the last two or three yard waste collections.
So you said you cut their contract by 55,000?
Just don't use the service.
Right, and that, and that cut back on what our residents getting. I mean, we're, we're already, it's, it's already hard to pay for the rubbish and-
I mean, funded at, funded at 1.5 million, I, I already have to remove four weeks of yard waste collection, because we're already $25,000 under what the contract states.
So I, I just can't see penalizing the residents anymore to remove this $40,000, is what I'm saying. I, I don't wanna see another week of yard waste removed, because we just didn't fund the contract of what we said that we're gonna do, that's all.
Counselor Boschman.
The only thing I wanna say is that Counselor Dean Natale to my right is that he's absolutely right, that the tax payers, I get a hold, because I'm tired of paying for multifamilies so they can go their trash away. And we're not, they're not paying nothing, absolute zero. They're paying for other people's trash. They're paying for other people's trash, which is wrong. They generate it, they should pay for it. Not their homeowner, people in the apartment houses. That's how I look at it. Thank you.
Counselor Bean.
Thank you, Mr. President. Adding on to it, Counselor, Dean Natale said, I understand where he's coming from, is that, basically, that's how we get our free cash each year, there's leftover amounts in each account. What Counselor Dean Natale has done, and I admire him for it, if he's actually gone back, I don't know how many years, but gone back probably since he's been on the council, and he actually has those numbers listed, he has a little bit of step ahead of us here, who are looking at three or four years, but he actually has the balances on there. So his documentation he uses or makes his calculations, very helpful information. Through you, just to, to Mr. Saracen, if Counselor Dean Natale's numbers are correct, which I assume they are, that's basically how we get our free cash at the end of the year, there's money left over in accounts, right?
Yes, on the expense side-
Right.
And on the revenue side.
So as if Counselor Dean Natale said, if you just cut the 40,000 from, I think you were just talking about leaving the contract alone, but leaving, taking it from the other part. I mean, it, it does kinda work, those numbers he's talking about, if there's, if there's been an average of $100,000 left in those accounts.
Right, the, the issue you-
Not that, not that you need reassurance, but I'm just kinda saying that.
Right, but be prepared that you, you probably will have less free cash at the end of the following year.
Yep, I just had to clarify that, I'm pretty sure that everybody knew it, but-
Counselor Dean Natale.
First of all, I don't know if we'll have less free cash. I have been consistent. This is supposed to be a balanced budget, correct? It's not a balanced budget, it's not balanced structurally. We don't have the revenues to pay for what's in this budget, we haven't for as long as I've been here. Number two, if you make cuts in this budget, we have no authority of where those cuts go. I'm okay with it going into a reserve for other municipal purposes account to keep the budget balanced, okay? It doesn't have to go anywhere to be spent. My point is, is in budgetary finance, it should be zero-based budgeting, number one, but what we do here is, we just add on top of what we budgeted last year. When you look at the whole spectrum, if a department, any department, and this isn't really for Mr. Curry, 'cause I, I'm telling you, one of the, in my opinion, one of the top department heads in this city, without a question. He knows his stuff, and he knows how to manage what he's got. That's, that, that's not up for debate. Any department in this city, if you continuously have that much money left over every year, yes, it becomes free cash. I am not advocating we cut every one of these line items and spend it. If anything, I would prefer the money we cut goes into this other reserve account, so there is more transparency. Okay, Mr. Curry, if you need to come back to us for extra money, now we really understand what the true need is every year. Not a pie-in-the-sky figure, and I'm not saying that for this one, but for most of them. Why is it so negative to have a department head come back to us for more money? I would prefer that, I would prefer, I'm not talking about contract stuff, I'm talking about anything, other than contractual, it's a fixed number. There's no problem having a department coming back for more money, none. And if we put it in this other reserve, from, uh, reserve for other municipal purposes, the mayor's gonna make a decision whether he or she wants to take it out of there, and then we have to appropriate the transfer, as if it were coming out of available funds. I just can't stand every year seeing these accounts with this money left over, and then at the end of the year, we pat ourselves on the back that we have free cash. I'd like to be more honest with these budgets, is basically all I'm saying. I'm not saying we should lower our free cash. Let's just put it in a reserve account in the budget, in case someone needs it. I, I'm, I'm just, I've been here eight years, I've heard the myriad of excuses why we shouldn't do things. There is no financial factual basis not to do these things. That's all I'm looking at. It's Mr. Curry's job to advocate for the budget he has, and to explain why he thinks he needs it. I have a disagreement in, in principle on the averages, but I'm not saying I don't agree with him. All I'm saying is, I'd like to take a wait-and-see approach. All I'm saying is, I'd like to take a wait-and-see approach. It's not, it wouldn't be a criticism of him if he didn't meet his targets, and it wouldn't be a criticism of us if we made the cut. It's, it's not up to us where it goes. But when I hear all these departments, I hear councils talk about needing more money for roads, more money for public safety, and then I see these accounts that have hundreds of thousands of dollars left over every year, I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, when I get a budget before me, like at my current job, the first thing managers ask are, what is the basis of this budget from, from zero? Okay? And if you keep having money left over, either you use it for another purpose or you don't use it at all. But you don't put it in these accounts and say, "I've got a balanced budget." The budget, as long as I've been here, has not been honest, and it hasn't been balanced. It's not balanced to the tune of seven hundred thousand dollars. And we're using one-time revenues from Great Wolf to balance it. So when those revenues aren't there, and when that overlay surplus is gone, we're going to have a million dollar hole. But because it hasn't happened yet, we're just going to keep going along as if it won't happen. So, thank you.
Counselor Tran.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Steve, for being here tonight. I didn't realize you respond to councilors at 2:00 AM. You won't be getting any emails from me at 2:00 AM. I hope you get some sleep.
Well, you were ten thirty last night, Counselor.
And I appreciate, and I appreciate your response to that email, so thank you very much. I get many complaints, and, and you, you are aware of these complaints that I forwarded to you in the past, about the poor service that the residents receive from Waste Management, and the many times that they miss picking up yard waste on certain streets. How are we moving forward? Is there any initiative to improve the service that the residents getting from Waste Management, and to make sure that, that Waste Management is not missing their pickups?
We have put a communication system in place so that we can talk to the, to the supervisor. I don't know if that's the answer, answer, because we're having difficulty understanding the drivers, but we're, we're seeking programs to put in place to, to help with that problem. But again, that is one of the reasons why I put See Click Fix out there. I need to know about it. If I don't know about it, I can't take action on it. But if I do know about it, and, and I, and I recall a certain circumstance with you personally, Counselor, that yard waste was missed a, a few weeks ago. And that, we, we, I pulled aside, the trucks have GPSs on them. I pulled the supervisor aside, and that the driver swore up and down that he went to your neighborhood. And I, I asked the supervisor to look into it. And the supervisor did look into it, and the driver did not. The GPS did not show that he went into that neighborhood. And that employee was subsequently fired that day. And he did inform me shortly thereafter that he would be collecting on, on an additional day on Saturday, when they're not normally working or collecting. So I thought that that was kind of a show of progress and, and a sign of good faith. We do have the ability. I don't have a problem with issuing a fine, and we do have the ability to, to take action. But I do need to know about it. Residents need to let me know.
So one of the things that has been pointed out to me from many residents is that they would like to have some kind of mechanism, mechanism in place for them to get in touch with someone from the Board of Health or Waste Management to, for their complaints to. For example, if, if there's a way for them to go on, on to the website, communicate with someone about a, a situation that they have or they're running into, or have a way for them to get the information from either from the Board of Health or the Waste Management that there's a delay in, in progress. So those, those are some of the communications that the people want in the city of Pittsburgh. The other two services that I know that, that they, they want to increase is recycling pickups, additional recycling pickups, and yard waste pickups. And I know if we can provide additional funding for your budget for us to increase those two services, you'll have my support.
Going back, Counselor, residents are encouraged to go to the webpage. On the city webpage, right on the homepage is, they can report missed collections. They can also fill out a form right on my, it's a fillable form online, right on the Board of Health webpage, as well as the homepage. So I encourage residents to utilize that. The second portion of your question is, I, I agree, there needs to be some sort of a, a program in place, a reminder, a type program. I've active, I've been actively exploring that, some sort of an app for those who have a smartphone, that they can receive information such as trash collection, as I mentioned before, what day it is, when yard waste collection is, just information that I can get out there generally. People would have to sign up for it. I think that that technology is getting, is relatively cheaper than it was a couple of years ago. I would like to install something like that. And, and these programs, incidentally, can help me identify those folks that do not have smart devices, that do not get that information, and those households we could identify and make sure that they get a calendar. I lost my train of thought on your third question, or fourth question.
I don't believe I had a third or a fourth question, but, but thank you very much for the data. Thank you, Steve.
Any other questions or comments regarding Board of Health, rubbish collection, and disposal? Thank you, Mr. Curry.
Thank you, councilors. I remember what it was now. Doesn't matter.
Next up is Council on Aging, page ninety. Ms. Goodwin, Mr. Walsh. Council on Aging, personal services, one hundred eighty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-four. Council on Aging expenses, seventeen thousand, two hundred. Senior Center building, forty-four thousand. Total, two hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars. Ms. Goodwin, Mr. Walsh, would you like to make comment before we start asking questions?
Just a heads up, the, this budget really is a microcosm of last year's budget. The only, the only raises in here, contractual ones, except for a change that's been made, which I'm sure somebody will speak to. We do not have anything in this budget for possible capital improvements. I think everybody knows that we received about three hundred thousand dollars worth of damage over the winter. We've been told that it's covered, most of it's covered by insurance. We've had the appraisers go through the buildings, and they've assured us that they're going to pay for this and this and this. However, there is a roof, two, two flat roofs that caused the problem. Could have been avoided with a little bit more attention from the Building Department, quite frankly. They came to us a year ago in August, after we had a ceiling like this just show a water spot in one of the offices. And we had somebody come over from the Building Department, take pictures of the roofs, said, "We have to do something about this." And to my knowledge, that's the end of it. And so this winter, the roof failed, and we lost, how many ceilings?
Four, I think, four or five.
Yeah, and all the carpeting, and a lot of, lot of wall, plaster wall from the, from the wooden structure up to the ceiling, all the light fixtures, and some floors. Now, again, the insurance company has sent somebody else out who's a roof specialist from Connecticut, and he hasn't got back to us yet. I, I wouldn't bet that they're going to pay for those two flat roofs. I think they're going to declare that they were, we were negligent in maintaining those roofs, and that's what caused the flood. So I think we're lucky to be getting what we're getting. We haven't seen it yet.
No, we haven't.
And we haven't heard from them in quite a while, which makes us a little nervous. So there's nothing, there's nothing in here to deal with that. And hopefully, we don't have to, don't have to deal with it, but I just think you need a heads up.
Counselor Green.
Joan, my question to you would be, I see the program coordinator position that was probably just referred to, a nine thousand dollar increase. And can you just explain to me, are we moving from part-time to more of a full-time? I see that it has thirty hours a week, but I'm just trying to figure out.
The position has been a twenty-eight hour a week position, I believe, for three years. Late this winter, the program coordinator was notified that it was going to be coming a union position as of July first. So I did speak with Mr. Stevens in regard to this, and he did indicate that, yes, this is going to happen. It's going to go into the management union. And it does, there is a nine thousand dollar increase. Right now, she makes twelve dollars and seventy-three cents an hour. With this increase, you're talking a six dollar an hour raise.
Plus benefits.
Plus the, plus benefits. And again, it's never been a union position. I, I understand that. It, I guess it should have been a union position, and...
Were we negligent in the past by it not being a union position, or?
I was never notified with her...
Does it have to be a union position?
I, I, I'm being told it does, because it's considered a part-time position with full-time benef, with, with benefits, full benefits.
That is not, this is a position that you created two or three years ago when we came in, in the budget.
Yes.
And it was a part-time position, twelve dollars an hour, no benefits. And now it's been negotiated, not by us. We didn't request anything. Our budget was level funded, I believe, and we were told that somebody had negotiated it into a full-time position.
So a part-time employee receiving full-time benefits.
She's twenty-eight hours a week, and she has been twenty-eight hours a week for the last three years, under a city ordinance of making twelve dollars and seventy-three cents an hour.
No benefits.
With no benefits. Paula received something late this winter from the union in regard to, welcome to the union, you know, as of July first, this will be a union position. And I, I spoke with Ernie, and I spoke with the mayor in regard to it when we went over our budget.
Okay.
So it, it does reflect in the budget. And there's no question, I need, I need a twenty-eight hour or thirty hour a week program coordinator.
Yes, and I fully support that, knowing that you've serviced fifteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-five seniors. I mean, I appreciate all the efforts that everybody down at the Senior Center does. My other question is regarding the custodian.
Yes.
And again, that's, I mean, that's more than doubled. So I'm just wondering if that position is moving from part-time to full-time, or an additional staff? I mean, where does seventeen-plus thousand dollars come from?
Back in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, Mike worked half-time at the, at the Senior Center and half-time at the library. And I believe it was last year, he came over to us full-time, so that's what you're seeing.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Counselor Kuschmerich.
Ms. Goodwin, Mr. Walsh, thank you for being here. I guess to, to build off of Counselor Green's questions, I guess, Mr. President, I'd like to, to ask it, maybe we could get an explanation from the Human Resources Department as to why this decision's been made to put this person in the union, obviously.
I'd be delighted to ask Human Resources, why and who made the determination that this position changed.
We did not discuss going full-time.
I, I understand that. And I'd also like to ask the city solicitor for a ruling, if this is an ordinance position, at, at an hour and a rate, how they changed that without an ordinance change. So I, I will be doing that, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. And again, that's, that's no, there's no reflection on, on the work that you do there. It's quite obvious. You need that position, you need the hours. And in fact, I'm sure, you know, given the opportunity, you'd love to have more positions. So I think, you know, the work that you do is, is certainly outstanding. And, and we need to, need to be supportive of, of your staff. I appreciated the overview you gave of the insurance situation in the, in the building. It's disappointing to hear that the problem was identified, it was not correctly assessed, and that this happened. It's a waste of time, resources, and money. And it sounds like we could have some further work coming before us. I guess, beyond just the roof situation, which it sounds like will have to be addressed, whether or not it's included in the scope of the insurance settlement, what other work, you know, needs to be done? I heard about water getting into the basement as well this year. It's just, you know, the work that you do is tremendous. It's a beautiful building. It's an asset to the city. We need to be maintaining this building and making sure that this just doesn't become another albatross in the doorstep of our downtown. You know, what, what is going to be coming before us in the long term, and what, what do we need to, to think about?
Well, the, the issue with the water coming into the, coming off of the roof and into the, into the cellar has been alleviated. We did that with a donation from the Marine Call League. And there's all new flashing on the building. I don't know if you've seen it, up on the post office side. And all of the gutters have been repaired. And we did some more work past week on the other side, on the north side of the building, on the slate roof. So we're in pretty good shape. We're told that we're going to get the compressor that's been put off for two and a half years. It's not in this budget, because we've been told it's going to be taken care of before July first. Mechanically speaking, the only real problem that we haven't addressed is the repointing of some of the higher parts of the building. We've rebuilt the, the front entrance with private money. Monty Tech did it. But up, up in the parapets, everybody knows what a parapet is, where the guns were, there's an awful lot of loose cement, cement work between the bricks. But that's, that's something we haven't addressed yet.
And even the roof currently has, has spoken to me about, you know, the concern about that.
Yeah.
The loose bricks and the mortar.
Mr. Crisp.
Mechanically speaking, the building has been pretty well updated, thanks to the friends and, and money that we've raised, running the bar and events. And we have a, a heating system that Joel and I had to carry the rest of the floor and get it downstairs, seven thousand pounds. And we were fortunate that through the efforts of Joel and some other people, we got that for nothing and had it installed. So we've, we've tried to keep the building up. I think we've done a pretty good job. But when somebody comes up and takes a picture of the roof and says, "This rubber roof has got to be replaced," and then nothing happens. Well, something did happen during the winter. It failed. And, and I, I feel confident, after talking to the insurance people and going around room by room, they showed us, they had a contractor with them, and they, they mentioned that they thought it was over three hundred thousand dollars worth of damage.
I'd like to salute the efforts of the, the friends of the, the Senior Center and, and, you know, the countless boards and nonprofits that, that have lent a hand in, in keeping that building in such great condition. I'd certainly love to see the city match that level of commitment moving forward. Again, it's an asset. We need to make sure we protect it. Along those lines, Mr. Saracen, are we in line to encumber those funds for the compressor this year, or does it look like that might be something that's, that's carried into next year?
Is twenty thousand that's sitting, right?
Yeah.
So if it isn't completed, it, it will be encumbered.
It will be encumbered?
Yes, because you've identified the, the need. And there is an order that was submitted this week that'll go before council for next week to cover the deductible of the twenty-five thousand that we know of for the, to cover the difference between the insurance and what the city is liable for, for the damage.
That's, but that doesn't include the roof.
No, that'll, right.
You haven't got anything with the roof at all.
That'll be the next, yeah, it's good you mentioned that, and, and that'll be coming before us, I assume.
Thank you.
Say, Counselor?
Yes.
Counselors, before I call the next Counselor to talk, I just want to point out and ask for some guidance from you as a group. for some guidance from you as a group. It is 7:30. We have a 6 o'clock to 9 o'clock timeframe for these budget hearings. We are on the second of 6th tonight. So, my speculation is, we're probably not going to get to the end. Do we want to, because people are all sitting here waiting, do we want to let people know that now and cut this list off at a certain point? Or do we want to just plow through and go past the 9 o'clock deadline? What's the consensus?
Counselor, we'd be glad to leave.
My only thing is, is I know last year, I had some people, some residents that were upset that they FATV cut, like, right off at 9:00. Is that going to happen again this year?
That's my understanding. We'll move forward. Counselor Dean.
I would just suggest that we move forward to 8:30 and take a reassessment at that time, unfortunately.
Thank you. Counselor Dean Talley.
Mr. Sarason, you said that the money for the compressor is going to be encumbered?
Yes.
What are the rules governing encumbrance? Because in my professional experience, you don't encumber funds unless the job has been completed and a physical invoice is in hand, or there's some recognition that the item has been received?
No, it's a little different in municipal. One, if the money's been appropriated for a specific purpose, we, and say it's appropriated for a fire truck in June, we argue the point, or we take the position, and the auditors and the DOR, Department of Revenue, have always gone along with it, that we encumber the money because it still has to go through procurement. And it is not an accounts payable yet. It is just a reserve for future expenditure. So, we haven't had a problem with that.
Just, it was just clarification. My second question is, so the compressor's not in yet?
No.
If you recall, last year, I asked you, if the compressor was going to get fixed, and you said, "I hope so," that was a year ago. And the compressor's been offline for how long?
Two and a half years.
Two and a half years. So, last year, when I asked the question, it was offline for a year and a half. And this year, it's now two and a half. I am at a loss. I really am. Either there is some inefficiencies going on that no one wants to talk about, or only in the city of Pittsburgh does it take years to fix something on the roof. You said buildings showed up. I got to ask the next question. Did any of this have to do with purchasing? If you don't know the answer to that, I do.
Yeah.
It did.
Yeah.
Building Commissioner told me a few weeks ago, because I asked him, I said, "The compressor's still not in there." I just learned this two and a half years. He said to me that it was in purchasing for several months, and he didn't get notified about what was wrong with it until six months after he submitted the request.
There's a paper trail that we could show you.
Okay. You don't have to show me. I believe it, because it's consistent with everything else I hear. But two and a half years, and it's still not in. I will bet my life savings, it won't be in by the end of the year either. No offense to you, too. Not your fault, but it's just the reality we face here, because we continue to do things efficiently. So, I am very floored by this. Two and a half years, still not in, and it was promised it was going to be put in soon last year. And then, when I asked the building commissioner, "Why does it take it so long?", it was as if I reminded him. You know, it's like, good thing I asked. So, and on the program coordinator, I'm reading, I actually asked Mrs. Stevens this a couple of weeks ago. I got an email from him. I sent it to the rest of the council, but I don't want to do that if there's a quorum. So, maybe it should go to the city clerk, and she can distribute it. But he's telling me that it's pretty much on our end. We're responsible for this. And I'm not disagreeing with him, because he gives me all the dates and times. The original request was for 19 hours, he says. He told me, "The position of part-time program coordinator for the COA was posted in December of 2010. His records indicate that a person was hired for the position of program coordinator for the COA on December 13, 2011. The council on aging director requested of the mayor in writing on January 2, 2012, to increase the hours of the coordinator from 19 to 28. And the mayor obliged. The council appropriated the funds. And then, the mayor funded that position the next budget session with 29 hours. Per Mr. Stevens' statement to me, any employee whose average work week is more than 20 hours a week or over 1,000 hours in a 12-month period is eligible for prorated benefits and participates in the city's retirement system." So, when we went from 19 to 28 hours, we effectively triggered that full-time status with benefits. And we didn't even realize it. Because I remember taking the vote, I voted for it. I voted for the 19 hours specifically because it was part-time. But I was not knowledgeable enough, and this is my negligence, my fault, that if you go over 20, you trigger the union involvement, which then requires this employee to be full-time, whether he or she wants to be or not, if they're working those amount of hours, that's the requirement across the board. So, I personally dropped the ball on that one, because if I knew that was going to happen, no offense, I may not have voted for it. Because the benefits is what I try to focus on here, given our liabilities. So, we have nobody to blame but ourselves for that one, if we're all in disagreement on this. But I mean, I'll send this to Ms. Farrell, and she can send it out to everybody. But this is, he gave me a very detailed background of this.
I understand the benefit piece, going to 28 hours. And she has picked up some of the benefits. But I had no idea about the union piece.
I mean, I can't answer that. But what is interesting about this one particular subject is, when the city did the first reorg in 2008, none of us were aware of what was going to ensue by that reorg. That reorg triggered a slew of new union positions, which now make it more difficult for the city to make substantive changes in management. And now, this person's getting sucked in. I mean, we just keep adding positions into the union where it's harder and harder to actually affect change. So, but I got no one to blame on this one but myself. I didn't even know that. Now, I do. Because this was sold as part-time, even at 28 hours. Because we all think 28, 40 hours, 38 hours, that's full-time. Anything over 20 is considered a benefited position, which is the whole crux of it. So, it sounds to me like the labor attorneys would have to answer why the union involvement occurs. But to me, it sounds like if they're getting the benefits and everything, they need to have union representation, like anyone else getting benefits, per the contract. I mean, I'm assuming that this was in the contract, which triggered this happening. So, I mean, if anybody on the council is upset about this, in my opinion, we have no one to point to but ourselves, we just didn't know. I mean, I didn't know. And now, I do. Food for thought. But this is the backstory. I'll send it to the clerk, and she can distribute it. So, everybody has, because someone asked earlier if they can get a finding from the HR director. I already have it. So, I'll send it forward, and everybody can read it. But the compressor, I am asking the two of you, please, to please let me know, or let us know, by the end of August, if that thing is in or not. Because what we're going to hear later tonight, and maybe next week, is that everything we're doing right now is working just fine. We had an audit, which I don't have any credence with, because the audit says, "Everything's fine. We just have a few system issues." Doesn't say anything about the fact that it takes three years almost to fix a stinking compressor on a roof. Thank you.
Well, if you'd like to get a little more upset. No?
No.
We had our HVAC guy look at it, and he told us what was wrong. It just crapped out. We have three compressors. And he gave us a price. I said, "What's it going to cost?" And he said, "$7,100." So, we wanted to make sure that that was a reasonable price. So, we brought in another cooling company, and they were within $500. And the only variable with the second cooling company is, he could get the compressor in two days, but it may be a couple hundred dollars if he had to get a crane to get it up on the roof. So, it could have been fixed two days.
You see, I am annoying some members of the council, because I repeat myself a lot. But I repeat myself because I hear individuals like you two, who are on the front lines, tell me one thing every single year, and then the people it involves tell me something differently. Why am I not allowed to be upset about this? Why am I not allowed to talk about it publicly, as much as I have to, to get the message across, that this is ridiculous and unacceptable? We will just continue the status quo, because, quite frankly, we don't want to hurt anybody's feelings. We'd rather things run more poorly than make substantive changes. Maybe things will be different next year. Thank you.
I'd just like to follow up on Counselor Dean Talley's comments regarding the change in the position. He's absolutely right. The reorg of 2008 created many more union positions. And when I asked about that, after it occurred, why we weren't notified of that in advance, because that may have affected people's votes, didn't get a substantial answer. But I did remember commenting that we should always be told, if any change in anything is going to result in a change in status and a change in whether somebody's eligible for the union or not. So, I'm saddened to hear that that occurred, without us being told, when we added from 19 to 28 hours, that it was not only going to increase it to full-time and benefits, that it was going to increase it to the possibility of it being a union position and being negotiated. And I would hope that in the future, anytime this body considers change, that either the corner office or the Human Resource Department will tell us about all of the possibilities for that to occur down the road in relationship to that. Counselor Beazall.
Thank you very much. First of all, I want to say that whenever I go into senior center, it's always neat, it's clean, the place is immaculate all the time. And I thank both of you for that. And you're so lucky, you have so many people that love you there, that they're willing to give their time and their money to do these things, to help the senior center. The capital improvements that you're talking about, unfortunately, you're not alone. There's, we don't have a budget for that within the city, which is one of the things that I've talked to several people about. These found monies, every now and then you hear, "Oh, we got more from Great Wolf." We got, there should be an account established, so that when something comes up during the year, we don't need to wait. There's money already available that we can use for these things. So, for example, a couple of years back, got a little extra money. First thing I did was, I didn't go out and spend it. I said, "What do we need to do at the house? Put a new roof on my house, okay, for 30 years. It'll be the last roof I ever need on my house, okay?" But this is what I'm saying, the city needs to rethink the way that the whole budget process is done, and the way that we handle our buildings, and the capital improvements that need to be done to our buildings. We need to structure it such, so that every year, if there is found money somewhere, that we're putting that aside, so that we don't have to continuously wait to see how much free cash we have to fix something. Something that was probably $20,000 to fix the two roofs is now $300,000. And when you're looking at a building, the most important thing is probably the roof, the cellar, and, you know, the foundation and the walls of it. Those are the most important things. Without those, you're going to get so much damage within the building, that it's going to be very costly. So, unfortunately, I wasn't here when we had the first session, we talked about the budget. But I honestly feel, moving forward, the budget process has to be done a little differently. We have to look at what we actually need to spend per department. And instead of saying to people, "You've got 2%. Do what you want with it." We need to actually sit down with departments and work with them. And any extras, we need to put through capital improvements. And I'm sure there's a long list. You know, if I said to somebody, "Jeez, can you give me a list?", they could probably give me a list, a mile long, of all the capital improvement that needs to be done. How are we going to fund it? Is probably the most important thing that the city needs to reckon with in the coming years. So, but again, I apologize that that happened to your building, because you do such a great job maintaining it, that something like this, you know, had to ruin it. And I apologize for that. And we need to do a better job moving forward. Thank you.
Counselor Joseph.
I was just thinking on the custodian hours, where you have them full-time now instead of halftime. Is there any chance of making some of his hours off-shift hours to reduce the amount of overtime? Because if you were able to do with him halftime, so you took him on full-time, so maybe you could use him three-quarter time, is there any way that some of his hours could be Friday night or something to close up the building?
Nope.
Because?
Contract.
Okay, so his contract dictates his hours?
Right.
But we change, we have different hours for everybody in the entire city. Why would his hours be?
His hours are, what, 8 to 4? Like, 3:30?
Yep, 8 to 4:30, with an hour for lunch. And then, if there's events, you know, after hours, he will come in, open and close.
But we could change his contracted hours to be 12 to 4 Monday through Thursday, and then 12 to 8 on Friday, Saturday.
You have to negotiate it, I think.
Okay, so it's that, it's?
That's my understanding. I've read the contract.
The other thing is, Counselor, it's so difficult with where I need him. For months, we go without having, you know, any events that need to have Mike there. And then, now in June, we have two events that we need to have Mike there. So, we do the best we can. Any hall rentals that come through the senior center, his hours are taken out of the revolving account, because that hall rental application fee, which is $400, goes into the revolving account. So, what he gets for overtime comes out of that account. But this year, the hall rentals have decreased, partly due because of the bar situation. So, you know, for you looking at the revolving account figures.
Okay, I guess, my other comment is, what's bothering me about the counselor to my left's constant battle and diatribe about a certain department within the city, okay? And it's just got brought up, that it's considered hurting feelings when somebody else has a different opinion. Last night, we had a 20-minute discussion on this particular department not fixing something at the police department. And it was never said, at any point, by the chief of police, that it was that department that had held up that problem for two and a half years. It was the chiefs themselves that hadn't decided what they wanted to do with that problem, until it got to this point, where the current chief decided how he was going to rectify the problem, and he went off and did it. But yet, it became a two-and-a-half-year problem with a particular department. My problem is not about hurting feelings. My problem is about liability. If we have a problem with a department or people within a department, that should be discussed between the mayor and the person in that department. It should not be done at an open session of the city council. And I will not be part of a city council that continues to go after and vindicate, to continue to go after one department as the entire problem this entire city has. If it is that problem, then that problem needs to be dealt with for the mayor and that department. It's not, I do not want to be part of a city council that will continue to bash a certain department or departments in public session. It's not a matter of hurting feelings, it's a matter of liability. And I don't want to be part of that liability. So, if that problem continues, I will not be part of that discussion this evening. If that continues to go on while those departments are here, and go on while they're doing their presentations, I will not be part of that discussion. I will be leaving for that portion of the discussion.
Counsel Boshman.
Billy, how are you? How are you doing? On the council on aging expenses, you got building and ground repaired. We have somebody there that repairs your building and does the electrical work that you farm it out?
We have to, we have to.
Send it out.
Right.
You have to get contractors.
Right.
So, basically, like I said the other night, if we had an electrician, if we had a carpenter, and if we had a plumber, we probably could cut that cost down and off. Wouldn't you say?
Except you'd be paying three sets of benefits.
Right, you'd be paying three sets of benefits.
Really have to calculate that out, to really see where the savings are. Really have to calculate that out to really see where the savings are.
You're right, you're right. We wouldn't calculate three sets of benefits on pension, right. But in the long run, if you cut this one half by $7,000, and the school department's got a bill for $300,000, and you cut it down to $150,000, and the City of Pittsburgh has another bill of $150,000, and you cut that down to 100, aren't you saving money?
Yeah, if you could do it. The, I think if you looked at this historically, the buildings and grounds is plumbing work, electrical work, and this year, it just so happens that the building and grounds line item is in deficit, if you can take a look at it. We review these every month, but if you take a look at the overall expense account, and take a look at our electrical costs, which we've cut down, our oil costs, and we've calculated it all out to the end of the year, that we're probably going to come out just about even. So it's not, you know, it's adequate, and if it's managed right, you know, it's probably a cheaper way to go.
What, farming it out, or keeping?
Farming it out.
All right. All right.
Councilor, you're all set?
Oh, sorry about that. Yes, I am.
Councilor Green.
Jonathan, and Mr. Walsh, can you go back to, you said that the hall rentals were down this year because of an issue with the bar?
Well, compared to last year, we've lost hall rental, hall rentals.
Okay.
We don't, we don't have a liquor license. Anytime there's a function at the Senior Center, it's done by a not-for-profit. And for the last two years, I was the Marine Corps League, and they would get a one-day liquor license, they would run the wedding or whatever it happened to be, pay the expenses, and they would put the profit in a checking account, and then make gifts back to the Senior Center for things that are needed in the Senior Center. Previous to that, the Friends were operating the bar for a few years, and the same thing was happening. They had a license for a while, right, Joe? A regular license. But we, Senior Center, can't get a license legally. So for that bar to operate, you need, it's got to be a not-for-profit, I believe. And they can get a regular license and run it for the whole year, the same group, or get a one-day license just for a beer fest, or a wedding, or whatever it happens to be. And with the Friends, the Friends are contractually aligned with us. I mean, they're a 503(c), and their sole purpose, as stated to the Attorney General, is to generate funds to go back into the Senior Center. So they can do that. The Marine Corps League was gracious enough to get one-day licenses, and we ran that way for, what, two years?
Almost two years.
Yeah, almost two years. So all the weddings and everything were on their license. And they, they didn't keep any of the profits. All the profits went back into the building. So when we talk about putting flashing on the side of the building, they donated it technically. And that's how we, that's how we've kept the building up as well as we have.
And they're, they don't want to continue with that, or they're not available to do that?
They're not going to continue with that. It's a lot of work, you're there every Friday and Saturday night, and, you know, we kind of, we kind of wore the guy out. The Friends now have indicated that they'd like to start it back up, I believe. I'm sure Councilor Caddy could bring you up to speed on that. But again, if you have a function in the hall, and you don't have a liquor license, there are a lot of functions, like a wedding.
That want to have the bar open, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions regarding the Council on Aging Budget? Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Moving forward to the library, page 96. Good evening, Sharon.
Hi.
Library, personal services, $459,805. Library office, $300. Library supplies, $84,000. Library maintenance, $160,722. Total, $704,827. Good evening. Any comments before we ask questions?
Just that, from the MBLC, the municipal appropriation is, needs to be 2.5% more than the average of the last three years. And municipal appropriation can include this budget plus revolving funds. So this budget at the 707 is not, let me go back, the MAR is actually 727,301. So if you take this away, we're short a little bit, but our revolving fund, I projected 20,000, so that will make up the difference, and we would be where we need to be for state aid.
Thank you. Councilor Bean.
Welcome. You know, looking at your personal services, I understand that, and obviously wish you had more, but you don't. But the building itself, I'm just trying to get a handle on the building. We've talked about that on, just about everybody's come forward.
Just for one second, if we could identify, is it Mr. McKenna?
Jonah McKenna.
Yeah, for the record, for the clerk, thank you.
McKenna Moss.
High committee, yeah.
I'm just trying to get a handle on the, on where you are with your building. You know, I know there's been some problems in the past, are we, what is, what is our future outlook on the building there?
The MBLC is anticipating that they will be putting forth a construction grant into 2016, 17. So we're in the process now of rewriting a building program of what, what the needs of the library are. And then the architects, an OPM would be hired, an architect to determine with engineers what can be done with the building we have, and what additional space we might need, and how best to...
Are there any structural problems with it today?
I don't think there's any structural problems. They certainly have to do engineering tests to figure that out. There's lots of code issues that...
You do.
Well, because it was built in 1967. So open stairways, for example, aren't allowed, with those open treads that can go through, and railings that are big enough to put your head through. Things like that would have to be addressed, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Beazall.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you for a great job that you do, and you're another organization that has tremendous volunteers helping out down there, and you do a fantastic job. Couple of questions I have is, when I'm looking at the budget, there, it looks like there's been, like, some jobs that flopped on here. Can you explain that a little more, like?
I think it was some people that were in the wrong code. They were library assistants part-time, but they should have been in the professional, pre-professional line. So this is just trying to balance them, so they were in the proper place.
And the next question I have is, heating fuel. You have $50,000 in, in the past, you've used more than that. So were you, are you expecting fuel to continue to go down, or?
No, obviously not. I submitted, I believe, a $60,000 to match this year's, what I thought this year's projected would be. But this was one of the cuts that came back to me from the mayor's office. So it'll probably be made up with some of the other funds, one of the other expense lines, and then we would offset that with the revolving fund money, to make up the difference.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Deen Talley.
Ms. Bernard, did you say that you needed another $20,000 to meet the state requirement? That, without going into the revolving fund?
No, well, we'd need this 707,000, whatever.
But you're using revolving funds to supplement that in order to meet the requirement?
Yes, the MBLC, that's how they look at it.
Right.
Municipal appropriation includes the city budget and revolving funds.
How much is in the revolving account, once you take 20,000 out of it? I mean, how's that account stand right now?
What I try to do is spend only the money I received in the previous year. So right now, we're sitting, it's a little more than 20,000. And I think, maybe it's at 24, and I have 2,000, I, my figures, I have 2,000 left from last fiscal year to spend for the rest of this year, which I'll need for some supplies and things, so.
Can you use that money for any purpose?
Well, we did create a, I don't know what you call it, what was it, Dick? When we set up the revolving fund, we talked about what it can be used for.
Can you use it for, like, capital needs, is my real question? Can you use it for?
Anything related to the library, it's limited in the scope where you can't use full-time salaries, because then you have to cover benefits.
Yeah.
But for the most part, anything related to the library.
So you could use it for capital needs, if the situation warranted. My point is, is...
Except that the capital needs are separate from the municipal appropriation for the state aid.
Oh, okay, so that doesn't count.
I think that capital, right, capital funds can't be included in that figure.
Understood, but my, where I'm going with this, Ms. Bernard, is every year, would you say you get maybe 20,000 a year that goes into that account?
It varies, but yes, I would say about 20.
So...
20 to 25.
So on average, playing it safe, over five years, you could potentially, if you never touched that money, have $100,000.
Into the library, because we as a city can't lose $2,000. I know at one of the council meetings, I offered to pay the $2,000, and I had a council tell me, no, keep your money. But that's not, the point is, is it gets to a point where it's ridiculous. It's ridiculous that we're continuously talking about this parking for children, and parents, and people who want to use our library. We're talking about $2,000 out of a $108 million budget, but that $2,000 was going to bankrupt the city if we just allowed the people using the library to park there. I hope that somebody in the city has the power to do something. If people want to reconsider my petition, I'll put it back in there. But there should be somebody in authority at City Hall that can say, walk across the street, put some bags on those meters for two-hour parking for the library, and get this thing done, so that people don't have to worry about getting the kids out of the car, worrying about the strollers, how am I going to get my kid in there? I'm saying that this should be done immediately, okay? I kept my cool, and thank you.
Nice job, Councilor. Councilor Bean.
President, I just want to raise my voice once in a while.
Recall, just talking about the redevelopment authority, I know they came in with the annual report, and I asked that they, we set up a meeting with them, and I know we have our budget sessions, but I was just looking at our calendar, I don't know if possibly we could have the redevelopment authority come in, maybe on June 9th, either before or after the Finance Committee meeting. But I really think that we need to be speaking with the redevelopment authority, you know, some other issues, not just this parking, but what's happening. We really don't have an opportunity for them, but I don't know if anything is scheduled, but it just reminds me that we need to have the redevelopment authority in here before us.
We will bring them in.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. President.
Any other questions or comments regarding the library budget? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next will be veteran services, page 87.
Good evening.
Veteran services, personal services, $85,889. Veterans expenses, $2,500. Veterans benefits, health fund, $530,000. Total of $618,389. Any comments, four questions?
Um, no, I just want to say I'm going on, finishing up the full three, three years, going on my fourth year now. Every year, it gets busier and busier, and I love being here in the city. Our office has gotten to the point where we have constant foot traffic through it, which was not the case when we first started up there. So just want to say, thank you for the opportunity for being here, and I hope you grant my budget.
Councilor Deen Talley.
Just so everybody knows, the cash benefits line, about 500K, it's almost a given that that's going to be 100,000 more. Every FY13, the budget was 625, FY14, it was 580, FY15, it was 600, and we're doing 500. So this is one of those accounts that we always raid free cash to pay for. And this is one of those areas where we could reallocate funds and not have to worry about the Veterans Commission are coming back to us. Purely because this is an area where we know it's going to be more than 500,000, just like the overtime accounts, just like Snow and Ice. For these accounts, there are accounts in the budget, you know they're not going to even come close to what they're spending, and there are accounts you know they're going to go over their spending allotment. So it's actually a wash, goes back to that whole point of budget honesty. So when there's an account like this that we know it's not going to be that number, it's a little frustrating, just to me, because I know you're going to be back. It's just, it's just a guarantee, just like Mr. Laxo with Snow and Ice. It's a guarantee. Thank you.
Councilor Green.
Actually, I'm not a big fan of veteran services and the work that you do for the veterans. I didn't see a breakdown anywhere of the amount, the amount of veterans that you are servicing and/or seeing through your programs.
Unfortunately, I didn't have time to get that together.
Okay.
I tried with Memorial Day, and we had the 5K, Patriots' Day, and that's one of the reasons I'm asking for more help in the office. Right now, we have at least, like I said, the foot traffic is constant. We have at least, I'd say, anywhere from five to 10, just walk-ins a day, where Roxy, the new clerk up front, she'll book the appointments, take the messages, do all that. So that's going on. The phone is non-stop. I can go through the books, and I try to do that, because we do keep a log when we're not too busy to write everything down. I'm holding at least three, four appointments a day. So I try to do them on an hourly basis, so I have time in between. If it only takes a half an hour, I can try to return calls, or, so it's, I should have gotten that together, and I apologize, but...
Oh, don't, I mean, I, it's not a, it's not a criticism, I just wanted the public to be aware of how many more veterans you are servicing now than you, than even two years ago.
It, well, there's, actually, it doesn't even break it down all the way here, there is in the book where the state compiles, and this is just the 115. So I've got a regular clientele, if you will, of anywhere from 85 to 100 bouncing around that are just Chapter 115 recipients. On top of that, we're doing the applications for the healthcare system, I'm putting in disability claims. Just today, I had two DIC claims for widows, that their husbands passed away. So it's just not the 115, that's a bulk of it, but we're a one-stop shopping. If somebody is stuck, they can't get ahold of the VA, making phone calls, trying to get their issues done. So it's, it's quite busy up there.
Ideally, could you use another full-time, I'm sorry, could you use another part-time, non-union position?
Well, is that on top of the...
On top of Roxy, well, I mean, on top of that clerical position that you already have, could you use another part-time person?
I wouldn't say no.
Do you have enough room in that, in the office that you have now?
We could make it work in Roxy's office, if it was just a part-time person, because she's getting to the point now with the phone calls and whatnot, where she's starting to fall back on her filing. But again, she's not, as of right now, I would say, two people would be good. I don't want two, you know how they say, too many cooks spoil the stew? So right now, I would say, if she were to come in Tuesdays through Fridays, all day, right now it's sporadic, because she's supposed to be 19 hours. Fortunately, because of the change in positions up there, the change in people, there's a few extra hours where she's been able to do more than her 19 hours, and we're not going above that $1,000, the $1,000 hour mark, so she doesn't have to be the benefited. But if she's all there, there all day long, and I'm able to do my paperwork and pass on to her, and she can get things done, it, I think right now, the two full-time people, well, her Tuesday through Thir, Tuesday through Friday, all day, which is the half-hour lunch, I think that would probably suffice for now. And if it didn't, if it, by the end, by next year, then I would come forward. I just don't want to say, yes, I'll take that, and then, because we're doing good, it's just I have days, I'm spending at least 45 to 50 hours a week up in there. So if she were in there, the more hours, I would be able to get to some of the pressing stuff, because of course, there's only certain things that she can do. And I'm not having enough time to get to more of what I have to do, so I have to stay later to get it done. And it's a, somebody said to me, well, don't do it, and then they'll see that you need more, another person. Well, if I don't do it, I mean, that's just totally irresponsible, and the office is going to go to pot, literally. So in order to keep things running more efficiently, and to make sure things are filed and things are put... So, um, in order to keep things running more efficiently and to make sure things are filed and things are put where they need to be, and the office is in a good working condition, that's what it's taking at this point. But with Roxy there, just another ten hours a week would make a huge difference.
All right. Thank you, and again, I commend you and your staff for having an expense of twenty-five hundred dollars a year for the amount of work that your department does. I mean, I, I can't say enough about your department, and I appreciate the work that you do for the veterans.
Thank you.
Counselor Bean.
Thank you, Ms. President. Michelle, just getting back to the clerical position, so-
Yes.
Currently, before this budget, it was at seventeen thousand, so that was that nineteen-hour budget?
Yes, and it was-
But now, does this bring it to a full, a benefit, I guess we're gonna, so we're not doing what we just did with the senior center? Are we doing what we're doing with the senior center now, or not? Making it a benefit position?
She, that position was at nineteen and a half hours.
It was, and now-
Has been since two thousand and twelve.
Right.
Uh, we wanna bring it up to the thirty hours in the veteran's office, so it would bring it to benefited, but-
And unionized?
At, at the same time, we have spoken about it in, uh, with Human Resources, where she would, may, may be a shared person. So where our office is closed on Mondays, she would be multiple use, she would be working with Bernie Stevens, trying to do some of whatever he needs her to do, which she is, she is good with that. And I told her, as long as it doesn't interfere with my office, I'm good with that. But, so it would be, it, it would become full-time, it would become unionized, it would become benefited, but it's like you're getting two, two employees.
I understand, yeah. I just wanna make sure we're aware of it, again, so we're all, we're not complaining about two years down the road, is that now we have a benefit position? We gotta pay, you know, the, these costs associated with it, now it's in the union, so as long as we're all aware of that, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, right up, she will be full-time benefited, union.
Thank you.
Counselor Dean Tally.
I, I don't know if I like the idea of a staff member of yours doing work for other areas. I mean, if the need is so great.
On Mondays-
I know you close Monday, though.
Right, and that's, that's the issue with the Mondays. On Mondays, I, I use Mondays to try to catch up with things. Her main duties are answering the phone, meeting clients that come in off of the street. We have that security system up there now, which is great for security, but as far as for functionality, for me, it's a total pain. My office is in the back, the security system's up front. So if I'm trying to do anything back in my office, every time that goes off, if she's not there, I'm dropping everything, going up front, answering it, meeting the client. So on Mondays, it's not as much of an issue, because I can be doing my work, uh, and catching up on stuff.
Do you, do you get, on Mondays, do you still get calls, though, right?
We get calls, and what I do is I screen them.
Okay.
Because it's very difficult to tell people, yes, I'm here, but you can't come and see me.
Right, okay.
Uh, I try to explain to them, the senior center is closed on Mondays. If it's an emergency, absolutely, I take them in. I'll let it go to voicemail, and I screen them as they come in. If it's an emergency, I call them right back. Uh, it does say on the machine, closed on Mondays, so that way, they won't be expecting a call, and if they do get a call, they- I mean, and if somebody happens to come up to the buzzer, I do, I go down, and I answer it. I take care of business out in the foyer there, and make, bring the appointment book down and make an appointment. But for the most part, Mondays are the quiet day.
Yeah, I, I know I've been critical in the past of part-time positions to full-time, or no positions to full-time, because of the benef- benefit aspect. But there are situations like this where it's warranted. The, the, the areas that have significant cost savings by not going that route would more than cover these small areas that have very small increases for going from part-time to full-time. So what I'm saying is, is, you know, my comments about the city in general, about OPEB and liabilities, isn't relegated to, oh my God, we have to do a half-time person do a full-time for the veterans' office. It's more of a larger-scale thing.
Well, that's good, 'cause you haven't scared.
And, and, no, but I mean, it's, it, my, my concern is, in a bad economy, in a down year, the first positions that always get cut, historically, are the clerical jobs. I mean, we're now slowly building that back up, but my position is, those should not be the first ones that go in the future. Because to have the rec director, or the senior senate director, or the veterans commissioner, be the only person there when they're getting all of these inquiries, it's just not possible. It's just, so it, it's such an easy job to cut right away. I just hate the cycle that you cut it, and then we gotta build it back up slowly over time. Then you cut it, then we gotta build it back up slowly over time. You know, we should just establish the fact that no matter what, there needs to be a clerical person in this office, and if we really wanna make significant savings elsewhere, we can make significant savings elsewhere by going a different route. But for these small areas, it's, it's not even, it's not even, it, it doesn't move the dial very much. So, um, I don't have a problem with this personally. Thank you.
I'd just like to comment that, um, well, we're, we're seeing this on page eighty-seven as the increase in the Veterans Services Director is telling us that she'll have the person four days, and one day, the person will, um, that same individual will be working in the Human Resource, um, Office. I think the budget would've, um, served us better if it had shown that in the, the, the two different departments, instead of us having to learn it from, um, this individual in, in questioning, um, this particular position. Um, the reality is, if one-fifth of this should be budgeted in the, um, Human Resource Office, if the person's gonna be there one of their five days. Counselor Bean.
Ms. President, Michelle, I guess, you know, one of the reasons why that person can't work the Monday, you close on Mondays, obviously, that's why. Have you thought, or have you asked the mayor about maybe moving your off, if your office is such in big demand, why would we put it in a place that's only open four days? We have a City Hall open five days. I just, I don't understand why we wouldn't put you in City Hall like they used to be.
I'll be honest with you on that.
Be honest with me.
I don't wanna move over to City Hall. I know space over there is short, uh, there's a lot of cubicles. I like the privacy for the veterans, and in fact, if you look at M G L, Chapter one-fifteen, it is law that the veterans commissioner have a door to meet with the veterans in private. It's, I know, it, that's what it comes down to for me, and I know space is limited over there if there were, and I've heard stories about when the commissioner's office was, it's the old City Hall. And from what I understand, it was not meeting the law, and it was a disaster. And people would sit right outside the hallway and be able to hear the conversations of the veterans that were sitting in there. I mean, everybody deserves their privacy, but when a veteran is coming in, and he's trying, he or she is trying to file a claim, whether it has to do with that they got hurt in the service physically, or whether there's-
Oh, no, I agree with that.
M S T, any of that, um, people walking out in the hallway don't need to hear what's going on.
Right. I was just thinking of a way to get you open five days a week, sort of four days a week.
That would be perfect, but if it came down to the point of being in a cubicle, or being where we are and being four days, I think that where we are, that situation is better.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. President.
Any other questions regarding Veteran Services budget? Counselor Beazel.
Uh, yeah, I just have one question. So, if the person's gonna be there thirty hours, so if they were to work four eight-hour days with a lunch, that's thirty hours, why would you need to share them with another department?
Well, it, that's, it, but I understand Human Resources is, is in need for another person, and the discussion that was had is it may be more, uh, I went easier, but it might make more sense and be easier to get a benefited position if they were gonna be working the forty hours instead of the thirty hours.
Okay, so is this the position we're talking about tonight, is it gonna end up being a forty-hour position? Or is it gonna end up being a thirty-hour position?
Thirty hours, it would be seven and a half hours a day, eight hours a day, minus a half hour for lunch.
For your department?
Yes.
Okay, and then if anyone else were to use them?
On Mondays, how they-
I just wanna make sure that you're getting-
I'm getting what I, we're getting-
Full benefit of it, and not-
Yes.
Not having five, six-hour days, and I wanna make sure that you get-
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Open to close Tuesday through Thursday.
Thank you.
I can follow up on that, Michelle. So are you saying the line item here of the twenty-five thousand dollars for the mayor is paying that individual just for the time that they spend in your office?
I believe, I would have to recheck those numbers, but, and I should've-
Because if the individual's gonna work in the Human Resource Office, I'd like to know where the money's coming from for, for, for that part, because we certainly didn't get that.
Madam Mayor?
So, the money in your budget is just for you?
We had opened up the discussion with Bernie, but that never reached fruition.
Okay, and it didn't, okay, I wasn't aware of that.
I'm sorry, that wasn't clear to you.
Okay, yeah, the last I knew, I sent, I said I would have, we had the discussion, I said I would have to speak with Roxy about that, of course. I'm not gonna go in and say, hey, new game in town. Last I knew, I sent the email saying she was up for it.
Thank you.
So, so the thirty hours-
Counselor Dean Tally.
So the thirty hours is seven and a half Tuesday through Friday, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Eight hours minus half hour.
All right, got it.
Any other questions for Veteran Services budget? Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Moving forwards, page thirty-nine, the mayor's-
Mr. President?
Budget.
I'd like to-
Counselor Dean Tally.
Request, if the council has no objection, that maybe we call it a night after the mayor's budget?
I'm second to that, Mr. President. I, I anticipate that there will be lengthy discussions on the last two items.
I expect there'll be lengthy discussions on the last two items, and I'm not sure I'm even ready to address the last two items until we determine whether we have the COO position, doesn't make any, a lot, a lot of, a lot of sense to me. So-
I don't know what everybody else, but-
That's where I'm going.
Okay.
Uh, page thirty-nine. Mayor's budget, Personal Services, one-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand, six-hundred-and-seven dollars. Expenses, three thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-seven dollars. Total, one-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-four. Madam Mayor, any comment?
Sure. Um, good evening, councilors. Um, this budget is pretty consistent in terms of the numbers, but the job has changed significantly, even in the eight years that I was here. Um, I'll give you an example. Um, when I was changing over the clerical position, I was told that the previous cler- clerical position basically answered phones and filed paperwork. Our, both our positions are dealing with a number of issues that, some of which we never even knew about eight years ago. For example, um, just this past week alone, uh, we've been dealing with, um, organizing the Human Rights Commission, um, working on the Anti-Gang Initiative, working with communities of color.
Madam Mayor, if I could just interrupt for one second, I'm trying to help some people in the audience. No, we're gonna be, be clear that we will, Counselor Caddy. Nope.
We can't bring that to a vote?
No, well, we can bring it to a vote, and at nine o'clock, I'll call the meeting over, if you wanna do it. The meeting is scheduled from six to nine. And I have councilors who are requesting that we not address it, 'cause it's gonna go a lot longer than that. So, these people sitting here, I tried to, an hour ago, have them leave. Continue, Madam Mayor.
Um, working with faith-based organizations, um, working on issues of sexual violence, domestic violence, homelessness, including two people that just showed up at our doorstep, um, the other day with suitcases and nothing else. Um, mental health issues, public health, um, a lot of interpretation, because we only have one individual in the entire City Hall who has, um, the ability to speak Spanish. Um, child services, um, we're dealing with some sex trafficking issues, um, drug abuse, um, working with the cultural council, um, working with persons with disabilities, working on economic development, marketing activities, working on immigration, mental health, housing, and food issues. And this is just some of the lists that, of, of issues we worked on this week alone. Um, so the office has certainly changed in terms of our scope, um, and all the issues that we have to deal with.
Counselor Boshman.
Mayor, can I answer your question? You get assistants to the mayor, which I presume is a young man, and then you get the clerical. How come he's getting less than his secretary, and he's assistant to you? He's the assistant.
I know past assistants to the mayors have actually made forty-nine thousand and over. I hired the assistant to the mayor at a significantly reduced price, um, because he was fresh out of college, and, um, I frankly wanted to save money, and was able to negotiate a, a lower, um, salary for that position.
So you couldn't do the same thing with the clerical?
Uh, the clerical is in line, and actually, when I hired the clerk, I also hired this person at a, um, salary that was less than the previous two. Um, but this person has been with the city for six years. As you can see, um, employee starts to have longevity in year six. This person has been with us for six years.
You know, this is my second budget, second time I've been on the budget. And I'm really, really, to be honest with you, I'm amazed of what the people of Fitchburg are paying for with longevity in service. Uh, the stipends are unbelievable. I really believe that the people of Fitchburg are getting stifled. I mean, I never seen anything like this in my life, and I worked for a company for thirty-five years, and we didn't get kind of raises like I see here. They all say, which, 'cause they gotta go union. Well, I, I disagree, and it's not just a go-union. I think that, uh, we're part of the problem, 'cause we wanna get re-elected year after every two years, because we figure we can do a good job. So, state, instead of raising the feathers on people, we're saying, all right, go ahead, we'll give it to you. I mean, I can't get over it. I, I'm really amazed at the, and I know you're not gonna be here next year, and I'm not blaming you, 'cause it goes way back when. And they're unbelievable, Mayor, the raises that I see.
Well, I'll, I'll put up my, um, record of cost-of-living increases and, uh, contract negotiations with, um, any of the past mayors, and I believe we've done a, a pretty good job the last eight years.
All right.
If I could just comment on that also, and, and I'll estimate it for a little clarification. Although it's listed as a clerical position, um, what you just talked about a few moments ago, and, and my understanding is, we really may want to, if this continues to be the same thing, to rename this position, because it, in my correct, it's not simply a clerical position. This person does a, a lot of things that are beyond a clerical level.
Um, that would be true for both the positions. I know that in the past, um, some city councilors have mentioned a problem with calling the assistant to the mayor a chief of staff, uh, because this is what's in the ordinance, so I'm just keeping it to the ordinance.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Counselor Joseph.
How does the mayor's salary increase?
The leap year.
That's a day's pay?
A day or fifty-two-point-two days. Uh, it's, yeah, it's a day or a day and a, it's based on a seven-day work week, so it may be a, a day and a half.
But it's an ordinance salary of eighty-three thousand dollars. I mean, we're, we're an ordinance salary of ten thousand dollars, are we gonna get ten thousand and five dollars? How does it, if it's an, if it's a, if it's an ordinance salary of eighty-three thousand, why would there be an extra pay for an extra day? Give her an extra day off?
What we've done is, uh, established a, a weekly rate of pay based on the eighty-three thousand, and it, it, it fluctuates based on that one or two days extra every year.
But I thought by ordinance, the mayor's pay was eighty-three thousand dollars.
It may be per year. I don't know if in the ordinance, we, we stated a weekly rate. If we did, then, then that would, uh, drive it. If not, um, we, we used it, we wanted to, we didn't wanna, um, lower the mayor's rate of pay in a leap year, and then increase it back in a non-leap year, because-
I get the same salary in a leap year as I get in a regular year.
I could refer it to the city solicitor.
My salary on a leap year is-
You're talking a day's pay.
Would you like us to-
We could refer it to the city solicitor.
Right, I'd like to maybe-
Have him rule on it.
Make a proposal to cut that position six hundred and thirty-one dollars. I'm sorry? I'd make a proposal to cut that position six hundred and thirty-one dollars, or to the ordinance. Okay. It's nothing personal, it's just- Counselor Boshman.
Mayor, on page, uh, forty-six. It says here, you get the mayor, you get assistants to the mayor, and then you have confidential head clerk. Now, what is it, confidential head clerk, or is it clerical?
Um, clerical is just a general term that we use.
Oh, okay.
Um, but there are all sorts of positions within clerical.
All right. Okay, that's all I want to know. Thanks.
Counselor Green.
Go over the, we had number of promotions, seven. Can you, I don't, can you elaborate on which departments those promotions took place in?
Counselor, where's that?
That's on page forty-one.
Thank you.
Um, this is under the Human Resources, um, statistics, so I can't name those off the top of my head, but I can certainly get that to you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the mayor regarding her budget? Counselor Kouschmarik.
A couple of other councilors spoke about the, just the differences between the assistant to the mayor and clerical and it, it just stuck with me of, you know, you did say, you know, the clerical position does, you know, goes beyond the scope of responsibilities and, but as does the assistant to the mayor, so I, I'm just, I guess in my mind, if you're saying they both go above and beyond and they're both clerical positions or the, it shouldn't, shouldn't we have some, some parity there? Shouldn't it be, you know, should be level, that way we're not differentiating between, you know, one over the other?
Some of it has to do with starting, starting pay and some of it has to do with longevity. So if the existing clerk from the previous mayor was still the clerk, they could potentially be making close to $60,000 simply because of longevity and frankly, not do any more than they used to do. So some of this is just the negotiating starting pay. It doesn't really change. A lot of the staff end up taking on more work, but I don't increase the pay. I think it's just part of the nature of the job. In terms of the assistant to the mayor, I would assume that if he were hired by another mayor, he would be hired at a significantly higher pay because he now has a lot of experience under his belt. But when I hired him, he was my intern for a few years and did not have proven ability at that point in time beyond a very simple scope of services, has risen to the occasion. I have not given him more money in, in, I would say, in light of his increased skills, but he's certainly much more marketable in the future.
Oh, he's certainly one of the hardest-working individuals in the city and we're getting him at a bargain rate.
Counselor Boishman.
Mayor, you have heard me a couple nights say, and I wonder if you have any data, farm out and hiring people. You know, we're farming out the lights now because, which is named Harry's retiring in July. We brought it over to DBW and we're sending it out, they're contracting it out at a cost and not doing it for free, a lot more cost. I like to know, you've been the mayor for eight years and you see some of these bids come in, is it cheaper, actual cheaper? Because I seen GE, when I worked at GE, they bombed out stuff and, and lo and behold, it was cheaper to have it done in-house even though they were paying benefits. But they realized it was, and they brought it back into work and have it done here. And it was cheaper and you had good quality work done. Like it, you can't come and tell me that we don't need a electrician, we have a school department, we need the school, the buildings that we have, we don't need a plumber, we don't need a carpenter, those three guys, we, we can't use them with all the work that we have.
I'm going to defer to the council president whether he wants me to comment in other parts of the budget.
Counselor, we're here to discuss the mayor's budget on page 39.
All right. Well, she's the mayor, that's why I asked the question.
Right, you could, you could ask her that afterwards.
Oh.
Or at, at another meeting when she's not here for the budget.
All right.
Certainly, certainly would be appropriate.
All right, all right, thank you. All right, Mayor, then I'll do it the next time.
I'll see you tomorrow, Paul.
Any other questions for the mayor regarding her budget for her office? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Motion second to adjourn. Counselor Bean.
The two that we're missing tonight, we're going to add them.
To existing dates?
Get rescheduled.
Okay.
Correct. Counselor Joseph.
Can I ask that they be put on for us?
They will be, Counselor.
Another day so that they don't have to wait.
Always happens. Thank you. Counselor Tran.
Mr. President, I, I've heard many cuts that have been made. What I'd like to, to get some data from the city auditor is a list of all the cuts that we made last, in the last budget sessions, of which one of, which of those cuts remain as reductions and not added back into the budget.
Okay, from last year's cuts?
Last year's budget.
We can do that.
Because I would hate, hate to see us going through the whole situation again and making all these cuts and then add them back to the budget. Thank you.
I understand that. Any other questions? Motion second, we adjourn.